Covosa Excavating is a family-owned and operated company specializing in the installation of Title V septic systems. Covosa Excavating is one of the largest septic system installers on Cape Cod. Whether it's upgrading your current system or installing a whole new system, Covosa Excavating can do the job. Covosa Excavating, 508-563-5530.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Public session, this is the meeting of Monday, July the 11th. The board has just returned from executive session. If you'd all please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The first item up is Newflex Inc., DBA Murphy's Package Store, 307 Main Street, Falmouth, request for a change of location to 410 West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that Newflex Inc., DBA Murphy's Package Store has applied for the change of location. Its annual package store license from 303 Main Street in Falmouth to 410 West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth, Massachusetts. For disclosure purposes, although this is a package store license and I'm the holder of an alcoholics seasonal liquor license, on-premise license. For the applicant, if I might?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Actually, my attorney's in the hallway. If I could have him move to go fetch him.
That's, go right ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Petition John was last one for Mr. Jeffrey regarding the liquor store on Main Street. As you can see from the petition, we're looking for a transfer from the address that's currently there to a new address over in West Falmouth. The hours of operation are continuing, are going to be 100% consistent from what they were before, no change of business other than the fact of location.
Do you want it? Excuse me, folks, please. I'll ask them. Thank you. Could you speak a little louder? Could you tell us what the current hours of operation are?
You know what, Mr. Jeffries?
Current hours are 9:00 a.m.
You're gonna have to come to the microphone any time you speak. Thank you.
The current hours under the existing license are 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Okay.
On Sundays, noon to 6:00.
Noon to 6:00, okay. And those are the same hours that you're requesting as well for the change of location? Just to read into the record, I have some referrals here for the board and for the public's edification. One referral from the Fire Department looks good here. Another referral from David Carrigan, no objections. I do have one from the Building Department. The property is in a B3 zoning district which allows retail sales up to 4,000 square feet. Retail sales does include the sale of alcoholic beverages. There has been a retail store without the sale of alcoholic beverages at this location in the past. This is a small site with limited parking. Based on the size of the store, a minimum of six parking spaces are required. The spaces must be available during all hours of operation. The site plan submitted with the application does not show the parking spaces. However, the lease agreement allows five spaces for the store from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Thursdays through Sundays only. Without the site plan showing the parking, loading, and dumpster location, the Building Department is not able to give a favorable review at this time. Would you like to respond, or would you like to, most likely, without the favorable review, the board would need to see a site plan of some form or fashion that, based on the Building Department, you'd need to furnish that to the Building Department, I would think, and then they would send it to us so that we would make sure that the minimum requirements are met for parking and location at the site?
Well, the lease that we initially looked at, based upon the landlord's lease and their attorney had presented to us, was that, based upon...
Based upon what you had just read, Mr. Chairman, it was that the Building Department was looking for five spots. The lease gave us six. However, if it doesn't, on the site plan doesn't have that, we can present a new site plan, but the landlord has committed to six spots out front designated for this specific site. We were told it was only required five, but he told us he'd give us six.
The lease says five.
The lease, the lease says five, I believe.
And he told us he'd give us six.
Right. And it says Thursday through Sunday only on the lease from what Mr. Gore has said. If you're going to be in operation other times, you would need the lease to reflect the fact that those spaces are available seven days a week when you're in operation.
Okay, so for the hours of operation will amend the lease...
You would need those spaces reserved for that location. My best suggestion would be that you would speak to the Building Department directly to find out what their needs are and develop the plan based on the Building Department's needs.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I did read the lease, and in the lease, the parking spaces are in the rear of the building, not the front. There were five spaces designated at the rear, so you might want to take a look at them.
So, that is one aspect of it. I'd probably ask for a continuance at some point in time, but a lot of folks seem to have come this evening. I want to acknowledge that we've received quite a few emails, quite a few letters, including a letter from the West Falmouth Village Association against, quite a few letters and emails from residents again, against, and a few residents, emails from those in support. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to, because folks did come out this evening, to take public comment on this license tonight so that it doesn't inconvenience some people who might not have the ability to come back again if we do continue this this evening. So, if I can let the folks speak first?
Absolutely.
I'd like to find out, anyone against this license? If you are in fact, please come up to the microphone and speak and introduce yourself. Come right up. It's not a show of hands, this is, you'd need to get up and make a statement. Thank you. Thanks, Nancy.
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth, Precinct 5. I've lived in West Falmouth for 40 years. I have always frequented that area. There's been a hairdresser there, I think just about since the first year I came here that I frequented. I do not have a post office box, so I have a mail delivery post office box on Chase Road. I would say, I was glad to hear you say, that parking would be in the rear, because I would say with the use that that area gets, there would be, it would be totally inappropriate to permit five spaces in front. Now, I use the back lot all the time. I know that the back lot gets crowded. I do not know, for instance, in evening hours, when the restaurant, whose name has gone out of my head at the moment, somebody, please. Chappaquoy Grill. It's had quite a few names. I don't know how full the back lot is when they are open. They are quite popular, and I just think this is a heavy traffic issue, and I don't live next to that. I know the restaurant is late open. I don't know how late, but 11 o'clock for a business there seems quite late to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Debbie?
Deborah Siegel, West Falmouth. There's a very high volume of traffic in a very small area. In addition to the post office, there are two other existing businesses, and some of us are fond of calling this bumper car square, rather than West Falmouth Post Office Square. The number of ti, the business owners will tell you that their main source of excitement during the day is watching the almost accidents that happen out there, because it's, not only is it, are very, not only is it small, but the parking is perpendicular to each other. So, somebody's trying to pull out, back out this way, and somebody's coming out this way, and somebody's turning in off of West Falmouth Highway. So, it is dangerous. The parking lot is full most nights because of the Chappaquoy Grill in the back as well as the front, and particularly in the summer. And the package store, I assume, is going to get most of its business from people buying cases of beer on the way to the beach, on the way to the West Falmouth ball field, and we're already picking up, those of us who walk frequently in West Falmouth, pick up broken beer bottles, trash, all along Chappaquoy Road and West Falmouth Highway. There is a resident who lives right next to the bike path who regularly picks up nips and beer bottles. There will be trash left on the beach if there is that kind of traffic going back and forth, and the West Falmouth ball field also gets a lot of people playing and tucking beer away behind home plate. I know I've seen it in particular, in the summer, and it's very noisy, and we don't need any more of that. It has become a serious issue for some of the neighbors, the noise level at the ball field, and I think that will only get worse. The coolers that I've seen, I don't know for sure they have beer in it, but I doubt that they have lemonade. So, I would ask you, on behalf of many people in West Falmouth, not to approve this. There's no way you can guarantee that people will just park in designated spaces in the back. People come to the store, they're going to pull into the front, that's the first place you go, and that's where they're going to park. So, please consider not approving this. I'd also like to say that although I don't speak on behalf of the West Falmouth Village Association, the President did ask me to come speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Christina Collins. I'm a property owner in the proximity of this so-called West Falmouth Square. The parking has now been mentioned, and it's, I think, more than obvious. I would like to speak about the whole design and layout of the building, which, first of all, is against the law because it has a third floor on part of it that was not stopped by the Building Department of Falmouth. But the other thing is that, the parking in the rear, that's all very well to say, but there's no access to it. The access, if you are on the side of 28A, the access to the right of the building, to the parking lot in the back, is so narrow, it's, it's not even a one-lane access. And the restaurant, which gets supplies from trucks parking on that, means that you cannot go to the parking lot in the back. Now, I should explain that I pick up my mail there daily, sometimes twice a day, every day, even on Saturdays, and that access to the parking lot in the back is blocked by trucks delivering supplies to the restaurant. Well, the exit, there's a sign of exit from the back parking lot on the other side of the building, and that is, first of all, it's not maintained. Nothing in that building is maintained. Also, the walkway within the building to the parking lot in the back is just a dreary tunnel full of trash. Today, there was so much trash there, you had practically wiggled your way through. But I'm just wondering how a store that depends on heavy delivery of things that come in big trucks, where, how are they going to deliver? They can't fit through and let traffic come and go. And also, I wish the owner of the building would be here. I don't know. Maybe he is hiding. Because it is so poorly designed. It is not designed to function and be worth it for stores. They constantly, they start there, the stores, and after a few weeks, they give up because it's an impossible design of the building, and, as I say, the access to this really quite large parking area in the back, which, by the way, although Deborah Siegel has not been there in the evenings, I have, because it is indeed a very good restaurant, and not very expensive, which is nice too, but it's filled the back parking area. To think that trucks would come after 10 o'clock at night and try to deliver there, I don't know, are they going to go carrying all these bottles by hand into the store? I, I think the whole thing is very ill-conceived, I should say. My background is in urban planning, and I look at it that way, not only as a property owner nearby with great value in West Falmouth. I've owned my 10 acres in West Falmouth now since 1962. Most of you were not even walking there. So, I can only say that I, my heart is in the place. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the board. My name is Steve Davis. I'm a resident of West Falmouth. Some of the observations I'm going to make are based in part on my experience over five years as a planning board member in the town of Carlisle, Mass. Ms. Collins raises a number of valid issues. I've been in the position to observe a lot going on in that particular parking area. First of all, she referenced the trucks and delivery vehicles for the restaurant. If you could picture looking at the front of this, this facility, the right side is the quote "business end" of the restaurant where all deliveries are made. That Bowman, Bowman Lane, thank you, I've only been there for some 18 years, Bowman Lane comes up to the right of that. And where Ms. Collins points out, I'd like to confirm that there's trucks in there all the time. Some of the trucks literally have to back out, back out onto West Falmouth Highway to get out. It's very dangerous, and I'm talking from a public safety interest, which I know you and planning boards certainly have, have to consider. The other day, there was a, and I have no big issues with what the restaurant is doing, I'm just using these as examples of how they'll be prolegated further, but the other day, there was a, one of these red Coca-Cola trucks servicing just the restaurant. That truck was approximately 52 feet long, as I paced it out. Yes, that truck was able to get around the building, whereas other trucks, like the Cisco is a big delivery of foods, food items for the restaurant, that truck generally backs back out. But the point being, you have a safety issue there already, and you think about putting a liquor store in there with the Coca-Cola trucks, the Budweiser trucks, and you know how big those trucks are. That's, that's a huge issue. Secondly, I believe there's four or five apartments, rental apartments there, and I hope that some of you or all of you would take a ride around that building if you're not familiar with it already, because the people, there's, there's one right on the corner where you drive up and then you have to take a left to go into the back parking lot, and that is one way supposedly. There's a little apartment right there in that corner. I, and honestly, I don't know how the people there live on that corner with all that traffic, but, and they have a child, they have a real young child, I believe it's about four or five years old. There's other children that use that back parking lot from the neighborhood, probably in the area of eight, 10, 11 years old, who use that back parking lot behind the facility to ride their bikes in during the day when they're, when it isn't too full in that back parking lot so that they can do that safely. I would venture to suggest that any parent would not want their children riding around back in there if there was a liquor store. There's no other real safe place for a young child other than going on the bikeway, but if they don't have their parents, sometimes the parents let them ride around back there. So, you have four or five other apartment buildings right at that left turn, people living there, trying to live there, and you're just adding a big traffic issue. The, the other aspect of this is the parking in the rear. Well, we all know that people are going to take the parking spots out front when they can. It is, it is a bumper car area during the day. I, I'm out in that area very close by very often. I've seen a car pull out and strike a bicyclist. I've seen other bumper, you know, minor bumper things going on. But the one point I'd like to make is having a liquor store with a rear, with, having to walk through from the rear, if they're going to come in there in the evening, I would, I would venture to say, and find that there's no parking in the front because of the restaurant, the restaurant really fills up the parking front and back during their hours. So, you're going to have liquor store customers going to the back parking lot. And I really have, I really think that a projection on that from a, from a standpoint of assessing traffic and the type of store that's there, you're going to have some loitering back there, you're going to have more trash back there because people tend, and I'm assuming that they, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm the chairman, I'm assuming that they're going to sell lottery tickets. You go to a lot of liquor stores, and you walk out, and you see the lottery tickets, all over because they're expended, they're no good, they didn't win, boom, they land on the ground. That's going to be a mess. Lastly, I would just like to ask the board if they would take a visit to there, sit there on the side road, Bowman Lane, sit for a few minutes behind the store. It can be mid-morning, it can be the afternoon, there's deliveries in there all the time, and figure out how trucks are going to go around that back first corner and get in there without causing a lot more problems, safety issues. And I would like to, like to ask the board to talk again with the Chief of Police and ask him what he thinks about groups or people loitering in the back of that, that cannot be seen from the street. Is he going to patrol in there? Is he going to help the liability of the town by patrolling in there? Is he going to charge, does he have to charge a fee for, you know, for a duty of policeman to be in there? We don't, we don't see in West Falmouth, police cars hardly at all as it is now, but I don't want to sound like an alarmist, but I've been around for a while, and I've seen a number of facilities, and I would be willing to predict that you're going to have criminal problems back there, one sort or the other, people congregating and doing what they tend to do and have done elsewhere in this town in such lots. I appreciate your time listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait a minute, she beat you to it. Go ahead, Maury, you'll be next.
Good evening. My name is Christina Laurie, and I live on Viewcrest Drive. I happen to be one of those hapless people that had someone back into the side of my car in that parking lot. But one thing, the one thing I wanted to say that hasn't been said that's of real concern of mine, I walked to the post office from Viewcrest, Viewcrest is sort of diagonally across the street from the post office square, whatever you want to call it. I walk down there a lot, and I also drive in and out of there. My biggest concern is the traffic on 28A that comes flying around the corner from, from Brick Hill Road down toward Falmouth. They go very fast, and I have more than once had to run across the street to avoid a car and wait and wait and for those cars to come flying by. So, that is a concern that I, that hasn't been mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Maury.
Maury Harlow, Hawks Precinct 5, 9 Old Dock Road, through the chair. How often do you change locations for liquor licenses? Is this a common practice?
I can just tell you this, that unlike on-premise liquor licenses in this community, the package store licenses in this community are numbered. It is based on population. So, this is within the population goal of the number of liquor licenses, meaning package store licenses. Very often, people will buy a license from somebody for maybe that location or another location. It has happened, but I believe there's only 12 all-alcoholic, 12 or 13 all-alcoholic package store licenses in this community.
Okay. I just haven't seen too many location changes. I see, you know, ownership or whatever.
It's because there's very, there's very few of them.
If this is granted, you know, I don't know what the outcome will be, but I do feel really strong that there should be, and the planning board might want to sit down with the owner of the property. This has been a problem since, this was never meant to be B3. Everybody knows it was, you know, through grandfathering of the old Barclay Restaurant and the Sunshine Farm. It is what it is. Half of the front parking spaces do back illegally onto a state highway. It's illegal to back onto a state highway. The fact that most of the people that go there to the post office, there's an age bracket, and they're older people, and it is pretty dicey in there, and it is, you know, touch tone driving at times. So, I just wish, if this is going to happen, it would be a great opportunity to address that whole situation in there. It's been a slow growing of apartments, you know, first it was just a single person in the apartment, now there's families in the apartment, so the one parking space now has a guy with a contractor truck with two, you know, his wife has a car, and, so it has increased. You can make... You can make all the rules you want. I don't know who is going to enforce the five parking spaces out front, because if I'm going to go get a six-pack of beer and there's a parking space in that front, you're not going to tell me whoever, unless they're standing there, that I'm going to, oh, you go around, that's not for you. They're going to park there. So, I mean, you shouldn't look at it as rear parking only for the package store. If you can't enforce it, then don't make it a rule. Make it so that at least there are five spaces there. In the weekends, anybody from West Falmouth or East Falmouth that goes there to dine, there are no parking spaces there, period. That's why the little variety store had such a struggle, because nobody could get in to buy anything at the variety store. That's their problem, they're going to be in business, they'll either make money there or they're going to leave. It's going to be their prerogative, but I just hope that the, the situation of parking is addressed at that point. The one thing that nobody has talked about is the residence on Bowman and Cohog Lane. There is one way out that's directed around the building, which is very tight, but Cohog Pond Lane and Bowman Lane have a two-way, which is the narrow, a very narrow north side where they all unload the trucks. I have seen people coming out of there that have to wait five, 10 minutes while they're delivering. Um, you know, I, I think they, I'm sure they probably have written letters, but the safety of when you go in there, most people that go there, they frequent there often, they know the situation there, and they go with caution. A kid that's, you know, from Milton and he just came here and he sees a package store sign, he's like, wow, and he's going to whip in that Cohog Lane, and it's a two-way, it's not a one-way, that needs to be addressed. How are you going to do it? I have no clue, but now that it has to go in front of the building department and maybe planning will look at it a little closer, it will help the people in the neighborhood overall. So maybe it'll be a good thing if, it goes in because this will be addressed, and it will be an improvement to the situation, but I do think that it's a, a big intensity of use there. Thank you very much for your time.
It's important to note that the building commissioner did, did note that this is a legal location and that it is subject.
Right.
It is, it is a location that a store or retail space could be there. The scope of the Board of Selectment to dictate re-planning issues is not within the scope of the license. We can look at public good, but the scope of parking and, and those are issues that are relied upon in the planning department. The building commissioner is going to look at those issues. Thank you.
Okay, great. So the building department might be the next step.
The building commissioner, we've already said that we will probably make a continuance, and they would have to speak to the building commissioner in regard to that.
Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Please try to bring something else new to the plate.
What, what is it?
No, I'm just trying to say that don't dwell on the same issues. If you have something new, I would like you to say, say those things. Okay?
I'm very environment support, and I live 398 West Falmouth Highway, which is right next to the post office. And over so many years, we've been living there for 13 or 14 years almost. And last couple of years, that behind our property, kind of ocean come from the creek, and all marshland. And last couple of years, they trash that in a dumpster. And owner of that property, he never, never changed it. So it's small, all that food and all that hair salon stuff, apartment people, they all use that same dumpster. And they're falling out from the dumpster and walk by it, it smells so bad. Even the post office people, early morning, mail truck comes, when they open that door, they smell so bad, and they find mice. So I mentioned to her about hairdresser next door. This is what happening here, she says. I said, I noticed. And Stephanie says, you know, Toshia, my name is Toshia Ford, I saw the mice one day. I said, oh my gosh, that's horrible. And right next to that is water. I don't think that's a good idea for any reasons. So we are pouring our tongue, which is, I cannot forgive that. So my husband, me, we went to Barnstable, the town hall, because here, this town hall didn't do anything. I went over there to see person, environment person, oh, Chappie, oh, blah, 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 I says. So sound like though he goes to that restaurant all the time. So almost like, you know, very friendly with him, whatever the owner is. So then I didn't hear anything from him. Then I don't even bother to call. So post office, uh, Joan says, you know, we, we have to go to Barnstable. So we there, and we complain about it. I wish to have the paper from them. So finally, they put the big dumpster, you probably, everybody knows here, right? So it's okay now, but that property owner, he doesn't care. He does just put it up, pothole with cement, and six months later, when it rains, just puff, you know, and you have to step over like this. And the, then when you go to Chappaqua Grill, I don't know, anybody walk on the side of the street, they have a screen door there, and when I look at the kitchen, I don't know how anybody can eat the food from there. It's so awful.
Ma'am, can we keep it relative to this particular establishment?
Yeah, what I'm trying to tell is...
I know, ma'am, but you have other recourse for these other scenarios. We're just talking about this establishment going to this particular place.
My point is, our neighborhood is very residential. So I don't think that spa is enough for good for liquor store.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody else in there? How about anyone want to speak on behalf of this license?
My name is Phil Murphy, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm still the owner of Murphy's Fine Wine, Cigars and Spirits because Mr. Jeffrey has not fulfilled his obligation.
Take the microphone, please.
Sorry. I would ask to, request to continue this hearing because, uh, Mr. Jeffrey has not fulfilled his obligation paying for that, that we have not closed on this deal yet.
Okay, so...
The liquor license was transferred, but the, the PNS and everything, I have not received any money, have not received all my money for the process. So I'm just going to ask if you could continue it until he has fulfilled all his obligation to pay me in full.
So date certain? Okay, thank you. We're also speaking now, anyone wants to speak for this, this location, and then at that point, we'll close public comment and the Board will have a discussion. Anybody else? Anyone want to speak on behalf of the license?
My name's Dan Shearer. I live in West Falmouth. I'm in the West Falmouth Village Association, so, and I'm not going to be for this, and I'm not going to be against this. However, I would, oops, look at this. After, after all these speakers, the ceiling's falling. I mean, West Falmouth should be closed from what I've heard tonight here. I mean, I was at the post office today, I didn't see any of this great message you couldn't walk through. But anyway, uh, we do have a problem in West Falmouth in, because we have a very successful restaurant, which I enjoy very much having it there, and that parking lot is not organized well enough, and the exit and entrance to it are not. This would be a great chance for our building department and our town to go in there and reorganize it. I am for business. I don't care if it's a liquor store or a hardware store or anything else that might want to come. It's good for the area to have business there. I'm for it. But we've got to figure a way to make the parking lot safe, and not for people that are riding bicycles out back in the middle of the parking lot. We'll send them down to town hall and see how they do in this area. I mean, this isn't our problem, this is their parents' problem. So I'd like to just say, it's not as bad as you have heard tonight. It isn't good, and I think there's a lot of work to do before probably anybody should go in there. But, and I think it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if, does anyone else want to speak in, forward, council? You have a chance to rebut before I close public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, the comments that the neighbors have made tonight haven't fallen on deaf ears. Mr. Jeffrey is a resident of West Falmouth. He's very familiar with this location. It's one of the reasons why he picked it, it's close to his house. Now, I've known this guy for a long time. He's owned a couple of businesses. One business in Wareham, he totally turned around for the same reason that this place is having problems. I'm confident that he's going to do the right thing. What I was going to ask the Board, as the, as the Board discusses this petition, is that we table it, continue it, give us the opportunity to speak with the building department, come back with a better plan. I know the location. I know that property is in need of some work, but unfortunately, that's the landlord. And like the last gentleman said, perhaps, maybe with the help of the planning board, we can get the landlord to come down and put some effort into this property and make it safe for everybody. However, for tonight's purposes, I respectfully request that the Board table the matter, continue it, give us the opportunity to meet with the building department and address the majority of the concerns that were brought to the Board tonight. Thanks.
Okay. Um, what's the Board's pledge? Do you want to have a discussion on this tonight, or would you prefer to continue this hearing, and then we could have that discussion at that point? Brett?
I'm all right with continuing it, but I do have a question about what our, you've mentioned before, public good, and I guess the question that I have is the scope of our purview. Obviously, there are a lot of concerns and questions about parking and traffic and so on, but if we don't have any authority over that, as you suggested, that there may be a planning function, I just want to make sure, I know the, the extent of, of our decision-making ability in this situation.
If I, I can read into the record, this is from town council. The Board does not have to, have to request the traffic study, but it, it may, it may, it that, if that is, but it may, it that its decision, part of its decision, I believe, is what he was trying to say. As to the traffic, the Board may rely on testimony from the police, the town engineer, neighbors, and its own experiences. The Board must base its decision on public need. The traffic is, is a consideration in determining public need. A traffic study should not be a condition of approval of the change of location. The Board should have an answer to the traffic issue before it takes a vote on the, on the matter. The Board may also take into consideration the availability of other places to purchase alcoholic beverages in the area. What it cannot do is limit competition for the benefit to a present license, license holders. There has been scenarios in the past that these licenses have been challenged at the ABCC. So it's very important that this Board acts in the proper way, because our, our decision could be overridden at the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission. So just for everyone's idea and ideal, we have limited powers, but those powers have to make sure that it won't be overridden at the state ABCC. So I think we're, unless there's other discussion here on the Board's part tonight, I think we've heard that there are a couple of things that need to be done. I think the applicant probably needs to sit, I know the applicant needs to sit down with the building commissioner and work with the building commissioner in regard to parking. It might behoove the applicant at the same time to talk about traffic patterns and things and address those type of scenarios. We have also heard from the, from the previous owner who claims that the license has not been paid for, in other words, the business has not been paid for, so this could be a bone of contention. Although typically, you transfer a license pending the transfer, and then payment is made after the transfer. Well, if there's not been any payment, there really, you know, there really is no actual sale of this particular, uh, business. So I would entertain a motion that we, that the applicant address those two issues in a period of time, maybe a, a motion to continue to wear off on July the 9th, so we could either do it July the 2nd or July the 16th, whichever the Board wants to do for a motion.
Before, if I may, Mr. Chairman, there's one other issue, and that was the, the language in the lease, where the, the, the lessor agreed to reserve five parking spaces located directly at the rear of the property for the exclusive use from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. I think, I think that the applicant should really consider having parking in the rear because I, I would think you would not want to have people entering your store from both the front and the rear. And I mean, that wouldn't, I wouldn't think, I mean, you'd have to monitor two entrances probably, which isn't a good idea. So I think some kind of a traffic flow, if the parking is in the rear, you know, where your, your public entrance is going to be for your store, because obviously, there's very little parking in the front. So I think that should be considered as part of your traffic flow. And with that, I would make...
I just, just one, one thing before you make the motion, and I think it's important to note that you have definitive hours for those parked, that parking. You would want to make sure that those hours match up to the hours that in fact, that this business is open, seven days a week, if in fact you are open seven days a week.
So I would make a motion to continue this hearing until July 16th.
Second.
If that's, okay.
That should give the applicant plenty of time to accomplish everything?
It will require a new lease, since this one, this one begins July 1st, 2012, so I assume that they will write up everything else anyway.
All right. So there's a motion in a second, and now any further discussion? Doug, do you want to have anything else? Motion in a second? All those in favor of the continuing this license till July the 16th?
Aye.
Close? Eyes out. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming out today. Next up, we have Anchor Ale House, 100 Davis Straits, Falmouth Entertainment License Request for a Change of Hours. As usual, I'll do a disclosure, behold of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. Has anybody for the applicant? Who's here to speak for the applicant? Come right up.
Good evening. Ken Caprilean, I'm the owner of the Anchor Ale House, and I just come before the Board today. I'm looking to ask the Board to extend the hours for entertainment to coincide with what we have for my liquor license. Back in January, the Board granted an entertainment license to 11:00 PM in, actually in regards to concerns neighbors had with the noise. We've had an excellent trial period, we've had no issues, and it was a great learning process along the way, but now that the season's here, it's helped out tremendously as far as, you know, generating additional revenue. And, but still going to 11:00 PM, it, it still prohibits, it prohibits me finding the entertainers, it prohibits patrons from staying, because after the music stops, they leave, and you lose an hour of, of revenue, and typically, from 11:00 to 12:00 is when you'll sell more liquor than between 9:00 and 10:00, and 10:00 and 11:00. So I really need for the Board to grant the license to coincide with the liquor license. We haven't had any issues, so, you know, there's, there's been a few times people have come in where we don't want them there, and we just don't serve them. And when you don't serve someone, they'll leave and won't come back. So that's how we control, there are, you know, certain types of people, we don't want patronizing our place, because they're just not the right people we want for our entertainment. We cater to people 35 and older, and that's what we're looking for, and that's what we have lined up for the summer.
Okay. I'll take some public comment. Well, let me just read, read, there is a letter in the file from Daniel Cunha, who is a director of order. Mr. Cunha has some concerns and could not be here this evening. He's out of town and would like the Board to consider rescheduling this or continuing this so that he can represent himself and the neighbors. He did send an email as well besides the letter, and he has some claims that are March the 31st. There was a police call there at 12:15 AM, and that there was entertainment there at the time. I'm just reading that into the record, those, those, that information. Before we continue on, is there anyone who here would like to speak against the license? Yes, sir. Come right up. Anybody? Anybody?
My name is Vincentelli. I butt Ale House. I approached Ken a couple of times. And both times, the music was, the amplifier was loud after 11 o'clock. He told me he would lower it. Couple of weeks passed, he did lower it. And then on the 31st of March, it was after 12:00, it was back up again. So I called the police. And they came down. Couple of weeks go by, again it happened. I had to call the police again. And then this past Friday, between 11:15 and 11:30, the amplifier was up again. It's got a start.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Your microphone? I'll get him first and then you next. Thank you.
Robert Cunha, representing my father, Dan Cunha. And it's pretty worked up that he couldn't be here tonight. That's why I sent the letter in. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna take this under consideration tonight, he just wants to get a postponement so he can be here next week or the week after, whenever, a continuance. Or hold off a decision until next time he could be here. He's open every Monday. It just happened that he was out of town. He just found out about this on Friday. The letter's in the file.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, my name's Kenneth Madures. And I butt property on 26th Marne Ave. And when this first started, when I first came here, Mr. Cunha, Mr. Vinnie, myself, we were against, we gave him the liquor license, but we said, no entertainment. And how this thing came about, about him getting his entertainment license, I don't know how that happened. We were dead against it. We said, no entertainment. They said, he said, I wasn't here, I wasn't informed. He said that last time the meeting was, that you gave him this entertainment from 11:00 o'clock, that he went around to the people. He said he talked to Mr. Cunha. He didn't talk to that man because that man said he didn't, he didn't come to my house to talk to me, saying anything about it. I knew nothing about it. I would have been here. He said, nobody come and contest this. I would have been here and said, no, I do not want it. And this is the same simple reason why we don't want it. It's because of the music. He said, when we first came here, it was going to be a string, string guitar. He's got a, what he calls singing to a microphone with a boombox.
Karaoke.
Karaoke. I mean, what, what kind of stuff is this? I mean, I don't want it. I'm telling you like it is. I live there. I thought you people heard us the first time. We gave them the liquor license. We don't want it there. We had the same thing with the pizza place down the road. We don't want it. And it's not the point of him getting more money, more people making him more money. It's not helping us. I don't want it. I'm telling you like it is. And Mr. Cunha comes back, he's not going to want it either. The other people we can't get because they work nights. So we can't get them here. But we don't want it. And we don't, we didn't want him to have the music at all, period. And that's the way I stand with it. And I don't care how he thinks about it. He doesn't want it. Mr. Cunha don't want it. And I don't know why he talked to Mr. Cunha. He said he talked to Mr. Cunha. But he didn't talk to anybody in our block. And that's the way I stand with it. I don't want the music. And I don't want it to continue any more than what it is right now. And if, I want to know, if he keeps on putting that thing up after 11:00 o'clock and loudening that music and that boombox, and I'm hearing it, I want to know what the board is going to do. And we have to keep on calling the police department.
And if I might, might, I might add that you do need to put that on the record and call the police department.
Yep.
They will come. And that the, the record would either show that it's a founded or unfounded police report.
Well, he can turn it down too.
I know. But when they get there, before they go in, they make that decision.
Yeah.
So it's important that if, if he's violating his current license or any additional license, that you put that, that, that record forward to the police department. Because that's the only way that we can go, this board can go.
Right.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak against the license? Anyone want to speak on behalf of the license?
James Santiago. I'm actually the DJ. That's, I've been, you know, everybody in the town knows me from doing karaoke at the Falmouth Inn for 13 years, 1,500 shows, never had any problems there. Twice the police came there, I talked to them both times. They said that there was no violation at all. They didn't hear any music. And as far as the, the entertainment goes, it's, I, I control it. I go, I look at the people, I go, no, you're too drunk to sing. Or I try to keep everything turned down. I, you know, I understand that they live right behind there. And I'm like, we're thinking of a hundred ways of trying to make it better and more acceptable to them, you know? So I don't know. I mean, all I can say is that he hasn't done anything wrong. I don't see any reason why he shouldn't have the license. I mean, until he's done something, aren't you innocent until you're proven guilty? That's all I can say.
Okay. I do want to say that this, this entertainment license was just issued this year. And the board took under consideration the fact that we would work with the owner, work with the neighbors. And I believe when you were before this board the last time, I know that I personally said to you that you have an opportunity here to prove that you in fact can live within the constraints of, of the entertainment license. This is an entertainment license that has been at this location for multiple years. This is a brand-new entertainment license. So you've had an opportunity to either prove to the folks or not prove to the folks. It appears, at least to me right now, that you haven't proved that yet. I'm going to give you an opportunity. But if we have some of the neighbors who's, that's saying that there's some complaints and that they have some problems with loudness of the noise, you haven't worked with them up until this point. And it would have behooved you to try to work with them. I mean, it's not like you have a 25-year history here and you screwed up once or twice. Those things happen. But when you're the new guy on the block and you're kind of screwing up a little bit, everyone's going to take notice. And in this case, your neighbors are taking notice. I'm more than happy to take some further comments from the board. And I'll give you an opportunity to speak on whether the board wants to continue this, make a vote on it this evening. Or, or, you know, I don't think we've gone personally, I don't think we've gone through a summer season at the 11:00 o'clock yet. You've been, gone through a spring. You know, we all know with the, the influx. And trust me, I'm celebrating my 30th anniversary at my location. So I know the difference in business when you go from winter to spring to summer. So I don't know whether or not the 11:00 o'clock license, in your case, you could prove that would be acceptable to the neighbors. But those are my own personal comments. I'll open it up to discussion from the board. Yes, Brett?
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Cunha in his letter asked about notification of a butters. Is there any requirement for that?
I do not believe this is illegal. This is, an entertainment license is not.
Okay. And we don't have a copy of the existing license. Does it allow for amplified music or karaoke?
Inside.
It does, okay. And, but it does restrict it to 11:00 o'clock.
That's correct.
Do we have, were there any police reports filed?
We do not have those. We did not request those.
All right. There, there aren't any? Or we-
We, we, we don't request those unless some of the board asks for, someone asks for those, for the police department. In other words, the complaint list?
We should have asked.
We should have asked. But we did not.
I would like to see those if, if we do continue this.
Okay.
One of the things, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see as a policy, and I thought it was one in the past, is anytime the police are called to any of these establishments, and there is a complaint founded, that they automatically just send a copy of the report to us to sort of let us know, gee, this rest, this place has been, you know, if we get a few of them, then we should act on them. I really think that's a good idea. And speak, may I speak about this?
Sure.
Thank you. I have, I, you know, I understand how business is today in your town. From 11:00 to 1:00, it's very important to you. I, I have a lot of concerns though about issuing this extension, Mr. Chairman, the nature of the area. It's very congested over there. So I find very hard for me to support this. And I would like to see maybe going through a, a full season with the current situation to see how that works out before we extend it.
Okay. Anybody else? Brett?
I agree with Selahman Braga. I, I think that we obviously have had some complaints. Mr. Cunha's not here. And, and I think that maybe his idea of letting this go forward for a, a, a longer period of time. But you're right. There's a residential area, and 11:00 is, I would think is a limit in terms of noise in a residential area. So I would agree not to, not to issue the license past 11:00 o'clock.
Any other comment? Well, I'll be looking for a motion. The motion would either be to continue, to approve, or merely no motion at all, and it would be denied. I'm going to give you, yeah. Go right ahead, you feel like.
No, I, I guess, there's been a few, there's been a few comments that are made that I want to address. And first and foremost is, you folks asked me to come back here after 90 days to reevaluate the license, which is why I'm here. Secondly, the noise is very subjective. So for anyone on the board to really make a decision on the noise, it's, it's unfounded. It's, it's subjective. You haven't heard what it sounds like. Now, Vinnie, who I've worked with, he, he's out on his deck at 11:00 listening for noise. And what you hear is a very slight thump, very slight. Now, I, I have a liberty during the week to close early and to visit other establishments that have entertainment. And the noise that's emanating from those buildings is huge. That's not emanating from my facility when Mr. Santiago is doing karaoke. If you folks were down there, you would totally agree with what Jim and I are saying, that these claims are unfounded. Now, the second, the, the third gentleman that spoke, spoke exactly what Mr. Cunha said two and a half years ago. We do not want entertainment at that facility. And that is still is what's going on today. I have done nothing wrong. I have done nothing wrong. And I am innocent. I am, I've been at that place every day, all day, since April of 2007. I deserve more respect than this board is giving me. I feel that I should have that entertainment license till 12:30. The traffic congestion, let's have a traffic study done. I don't believe that, sir. I don't believe, there's no traffic, the problem there.
I didn't say any more traffic.
It's not a traffic.
So, I mean, but you said it's a heavy congested area. We're residential areas around there. There's a lot of, there's, there's residential areas around the BBC, people living upstairs. Entertainment licenses over at the former Winstons, which is the dive bar now. There's people living upstairs, they have an entertainment license. This is totally, this is totally unfounded. And I've been, and I've been instructed by the owners of my corporation to do whatever is necessary to, to, to get this license. This is unfair, what the town is doing. And every, all of my patrons that I tell this to-
Thank, thank you very much, sir. But you just summed it up. You've been instructed to do whatever is necessary. And it's, this board is the licensing authority. You have an 11:00 o'clock license. No one has taken that 11:00 o'clock license away from you at this point. But for us to extend that license, we have to see in good faith that you are working within the constraints that we issued the original 11:00 o'clock license.
Well, I invite everybody to come down at 11:00 to listen to what my neighbors have listened to. And you will, if you side with them, then I, I just, I just can't see it. There's no noise there.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
I don't lie.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
My understanding of the entertainment license is there's not supposed to be amplified music, whether it can be heard or not, after 11:00 o'clock.
In, in his location.
In his location. And that's what I'm concerned about. It sounds like the residents are saying there is amplified music going on after 11:00 presently, even though the license doesn't permit it.
Is that the case, sir?
Yes. On certain cases, we play till 11:30. And one, one of the reasons we did that in violation is that when you go outside and you stand in my parking lot, the traffic conditions on Route 28 change from 10:00 to 11:00 and from 11:00 to 12:00. And the noise subsides greatly from, you know, between 10:00 and 11:00, and then 11:00 and 12:00. And if there's no wind outside, it is even quieter. So that, that faint, that faint bass that he's hearing, that bass is a unidirectional sound. So it goes in all directions. And, and I'm telling you, it's just a very faint little bass. The cars that stop in front of my restaurant during the day that have subwoofers in the trunk make my windows vibrate in the restaurant. We are not doing that. That's what you folks need to come down and hear. So I don't understand how decisions can be made based on what the neighbors are saying when it's just subjective.
The, the one issue, though, that you just conceded is you have an 11:00 liquor, uh, entertainment license. And you play music after 11:00 o'clock.
That's correct.
So you're in violation of your current license.
But I just wanted to be honest with you, Chairman, that I wanted to see what it sounded like.
You could go out there at two minutes of 11:00 and see what it sounds like.
No, because the traffic, the traffic is different at 11:45.
I'm not going to argue with you, sir. Thank you for your comments. The rest of the motion. Yes?
I would just, well, to echo what you said, that, I would advise you, sir, not to get indignant with the board when we haven't yet made a decision because it doesn't help your case. And the fact also that you've admitted to violating your license. I had taken no position on this situation. Now, I would advise you to go back and try to stick to the terms of your license because I'm not inclined to support an extension if you're willingly violating your license restrictions as we've presented to you, them to you thus far. I think one way or the other, I think the board should get any police reports. If there are questions about noise, if there are noise complaints that are issued by the police, then we should see those before we make any decisions. So if the board does decide to continue this, I'd like to see that. But at this point, I'm not inclined to support an extension of the license myself.
Well, I, I would agree with Brett. I think we should get police reports if there are any. But I would make a motion to deny the request for extended hours.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board on the motion? No, no, we're all done with the discussion from the audit. This is now the board discussion. We've made a motion, and now the discussion is between the-
I want to speak before me.
Well, it's too late now, sir. You had an opportunity to speak. The motion was to deny the current, the application for another, for the license, ex- license extension. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor of denying the license?
Aye.
Close? Eyes out. Thank you. Next, next item up is a signed hearing. Badfish signed hearing, 80 Davis Straits, Falmouth, request for an appeal of order of removal for the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Randy Masses. This is Chris Perisi with the owners of Badfish Outfitters, a retail bait and tackle store at 80 Davis Straits. And I did send a packet to the Selahman's office.
We've received that, sir.
Okay. Basically, we, in June of last year, we've gone before the sign committee to ask them to allow us to move our street sign because it wasn't visible and to get a variance for a sandwich board sign. At that time, we received permission from them to move our street sign. But they told me that because bait was perishable, that we didn't need any variance for the sandwich board sign. So we then received, I think, an email from the building committee. They were concerned if we moved the sign closer to the driveway, it would block traffic view. So we didn't do that. But we have had the sandwich board sign up.
All last summer?
Yes. And all spring. We were then, or Chris was then told by, I think it's Ms. Fitzpatrick, that we were in violation. Then we received a letter. I then tried to contact Ms. Fitzpatrick. I did speak to Mr. Gore. And he informed me that bait wasn't perishable, which I had a little bit of a problem with. So I contacted your office. So I contacted your office. We were told to put together the packet. And I was wondering if we could... I think I need a couple of things explained to me. One, why isn't bait perishable? Because we did put in three definitions. I actually suggested I should bring some that was perished. And I was informed that it wouldn't be a good way to start the meeting, which I agreed to.
Did you hear Mr. Putnam's comments the last time?
Since my wife is involved with the board committees, she's right here to make sure we don't do anything stupid. It's a sandwich board. We know we're supposed to take it in at night. It says bait, live poggies, live eels, squid. I'd like to know if, you know, is it covered by the perishable statement in the code? And if not, how do we get a variance, or how do we go about this?
Well, you're, in fact, at the right proper location for a variance, whether or not it meets the code or not. Tonight, it's within the purview of the board of selectmen, from what I understand. Would you like to correct me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just want to read something. I have a comment. You contacted the building commissioner, who told you the bait was not perishable, and the sign fell, and the sign review committee does not have the power to make a ruling on our sandwich board sign. And the only thing I can think of is, you know, your bait is refrigerated. And, believe me, if you ever take some steamers and leave them in your refrigerator too long and forget about them, believe me, they do perish. I got to tell you, I don't think the word perishable in bait, to me, is not very subjective. I can see where it is perishable. So I'm inclined to go in favor of this, but I'll wait for the rest of the board to do their...
I could make some comments that originally, when the sandwich board signs was put into the sign code bylaw, it was a petition article from myself at town meeting, probably 20 years ago, as a businessman, because I thought it was important to be able to... And I know I worked with Mr. Calfee back then, years ago. And it was my first taste of town meeting, I might add, that probably can blame all of this on that. But I think that, yes, some perishable items are important to advertise. Typically, folks think of those as just restaurants. And in other situations, we know some stores and some markets and things of that nature advertise perishable items. I would perceive it as a perishable item, but I don't know what the rest of the board would think. I see Mr. Calfee in attendance. I don't know if he came this evening to give us any comments, or whether he's here for something else. Anybody else on the board have any comments?
I would agree that it's perishable.
Go ahead, Doug. Then I'll get to you, sir.
I guess my question would be, then what isn't perishable? Are plants perishable because they are going to perish? Are, as Aladi Ogore recommended, things that have expiration dates, are they no longer going to be able to be sold? I think the idea was to be able to market things on sandwich board that have a limited life on the shelf. And I think we're going to open ourselves up for other people saying, "Well, we can extend this beyond." I think Aladi Ogore is trying to say he was limiting it to foodstuffs as perishables, and which is, I think, is his interpretation. If we change that interpretation beyond that, I do think a lot of the nurseries, a lot of the other organizations, you know, cappies could say their bud is going to perish in three weeks because it's going to be past the expiration date. And I just worry that we may be setting ourselves up for a way that, not giving our building commissioner a chance to support his view.
Well, I think you make a really good point in terms of plant life and other types of things of nature that could decay or have a very short life. But I would think that in the case of live bait, I mean, it's live. I mean, it's not half alive or half dead.
The poggies, I don't think are alive.
But it would seem to me that it's more defensible, perhaps, than plant life. So I would think that we would want to approve the variants, but maybe send a letter back to the design review committee and ask them if they could make a clearer definition of what is perishable, so that that would cover some of the issues that Doug raised, because I think they are issues.
I find that most of the time, these things work themselves out. We don't need to go back to the design review committee, because sometimes we open up a can of worms, in that case. And if we see repetitive items like this, just to remind the board that this is a sign that is put out and taken back in on a daily basis. It's not a permanent sign. It does have some restrictions. It's going to be close to the entrance and things of that nature as well. So it is not a carte blanche type scenario. So I would hold off on that part. Go ahead, Brent.
I guess when I think in terms of perishable, it would be something that if it's... Consider if the power goes out, is it going to spoil? And I think it's a fair situation here. I think if the power goes out, the beer is still going to be good for a week or two or three or whatnot. It might be warm, but it's still going to... It'll still be viable. I think there's expiration dates of six months on those things. So I necessarily... I don't necessarily think that beer or alcohol, if it's not refrigerated, would be considered perishable. And likewise, for plant life, if there's no refrigerator, I mean, you could probably iffy if you're talking about flowers, but in general, if you're talking about plants which are sitting, you know, out in the sun, yeah, they're perishable, of course, if you don't water them. But the reality is, is if there's no electricity, it'll rain, the sun will shine, the plant will still live. So I think some of those definitions might be a bit of a stretch. My personal opinion in this particular situation is that I don't think a variance is needed, unless, and I think this is where it gets dicey, is that Mr. Gore notes that the placement is 15 feet from the entrance. I think I'm satisfied with the definition of perishable, that these goods may be perishable. I think if you put the sign within 15 feet of your entrance, we're fine. I don't think we need to grant a variance. I think if you're going to ask for it to be more than 15 feet from the entrance, I would probably have an issue with that, because as Mr. Gore notes in his letter, that a variance is for those rare and particular instances where the strict application of this chapter would be impractical, impossible, or create undue hardship. I don't think it's impractical. I don't think it's impossible. And as for hardship, Mr. Gore notes that they have three signs already. So I think, as I said, if you stick the sign board, the sandwich board, near your entrance, nearer to your entrance, I think we're done here.
Can I make a suggestion, that we, the board, just affirms that this bait is perishable? And then we just send it back, because it's a perishable item? And it would have to meet all criteria of the rest of the...
I'd be happy with that.
That's the easy way to do it.
I have a question on the 15 feet. Is it 15 feet? Our entrance is in the back of the building. The purpose of the sign on 28A is to so people can come in. We don't have bait signs on the building. We have badfish signs, which, because of the trees, are very difficult to see. They look great in the winter. So now, it's the entrance to the driveway, but the entrance to our door is probably 100 feet away.
It says, the sign code, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The sign code does say it shall be placed within 15 feet of the main building entrance to the business.
Well, there's a building entrance, but it's not ours. Could we get a variance for that?
Well, aren't you right, though? I'm looking at the picture you sent, Rogers and Gray. I see your sign, but don't you go in that driveway? You're right on the right-hand side?
We are, but it's about 100 feet up. It is. We got to be honest with you.
Yeah, no, I just...
It's the old entrance to the motor vehicles.
But as I just mentioned, it's a common area, common parking lot.
Right.
It goes in, it's like condominiums. You go in and...
I just don't want to cause more problems.
I think we need a remedy, because he also... He now has an enforcement order that has to be remedied. And I think for us just to not take any action, we have to determine how to counteract the enforcement order. I don't know, maybe.
Well, and maybe Art can help me out a little bit, but it's the building commissioner's determination of the definition of perishable. I'm not sure that the board of selectmen can make, change the definition if the building commissioners already made that definition, but you do have the authority to grant the variance. So that's where the board's authority lies, and I think that's probably where you should stick to your decision making.
I was going to make a motion, but I'm just going to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve this variance, to allow the sign to be placed where it is. And that, of course, is going to roll the whole thing into what's perishable and what is it. I mean, I'm looking at what Mr. Gore is saying. He's saying even plants are not perishable. Well, believe me, annual plants are perishable, because they're gone come first frost. So I'm just ready to make a motion to, but I don't want to...
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Now, a discussion of the motion. I'm going to get to both of you out there. Ask for some discussion from the group out here. Mr. Calfee, you had your hand up. Did you want to make a... Say anything?
Hi, I'm Art Calfee, chairman of the designer review committee. Our thought of what's perishable is pretty much what I hear tonight. I thought Mr. Jones had a good thought of a perishable item left on the shelf as a shelf life, you know? And if it is capable of rotting away, that's perishable. And the idea of the sign is to give those merchants a little additional signage, because they have a life of the product to deal with. And it can't just run out. You've got to allow the customers to see that they have these items, and they should come in and do the purchasing. I don't think there's a whole lot necessary about defining perishable. It's... I think the word itself is pretty self-definable. It's pretty obvious here that bait is definable. If you leave it out in the street, it's going to smell, it's going to go terrible. So I would certainly agree. Now, that's what our committee agreed upon, that this is a perishable item. So he qualified for the sandwich board sign. Was there another issue that you wanted to ask about?
The board was talking about the issue that his entrance is not within the 15 feet.
Yes. It's true that it could be... Well, that's a main entrance, and if it's not that one, then he would have to ask you for a variance to allow the signage.
So I think David's motion covers that.
Yeah.
What is the variance from? A variance from what section of the code? The placement of the sign or the definition of perishable?
No, placement of the sign.
Placement of the sign. So the variance is related to the placement of the sign.
That's correct.
I think in this case, it's a variance from both that, because Mr. Gore has defined this as non-perishable. So we would be doing a variance from both issues.
Mr. Chairman, didn't we, about a year ago, we approved a sandwich board sign for the guy selling eBay stuff across a McDonald's? And that's not perishable. Was that a variance, or we just approved the sign?
I was...
So...
That was actually... That falls under the 1B of the section of business within its first year of operation.
Yes. That's a new cap to the bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
One other comment back there? Yes, sir? Did you have your hand up?
Yes.
All right, go right ahead.
Good evening. I'm Brian Anderson, the owner of T-Ticket Market here in town. Selectman Jones mentioned cappies. It was actually T-Ticket that was also cited along with cappies, signs that we've had up five to six years. We were told we would now have to take down because there's a new elusive definition of perishables. I've attempted to get that definition of perishable that Mr. Aladi Ogore, building commissioner, is using, and he responded with this letter, which says, according to the definition, it's not perishable. Many of the beers that we've had on these signs over the last five years have as little as 30 days code on them. And if you open them up, 45 days code, you'd know they're perishable. I also have another violation, that according to Mr. Aladi Ogore, now there's a brand-new ruling that no brand name can appear on any sign. So this week, if I want to put Powerball 200 million on Wednesday night, I'll have to put out Massachusetts Lottery tonight is, because Powerball is a branded name. If I want to put Captain Morgan Spiced Rum on my marquee at a special price, I'll have to put Well-Known Spiced Rum. So we're going to get into a real battle of definitions in the sign code bylaw. And if you want all the businesses to come in for appeals, we've been recommended we come to you for special permits. And I basically said, I do not want to come for a special permit. My dream, since 1976, was to have a sign code law that the average business person could read and understand, rather than the unmitigated disaster that we presently have. The planning board and the design review committee have kicked it down, you know, the path, and now the selectmen have to handle all these appeals. So we'll be at your step. But I drove down Route 28 and down to Woods Hole, had dinner down there this weekend, went up to North Falmouth on Route 28A. I counted 98 signs that had branded names on them. I don't know what the definition of perishable is. I have a copy of all 15 pages to bylaw. It is not in the definitions. The definition certainly isn't any of the definitions that we find in the dictionary. I've heard several definitions this evening of how we feel about things. We feel this way about beer, we feel that way about something else. But shouldn't we, as businesspeople, have definitions? Shouldn't, after we've gone through the design review, we've gone through these many, many meetings, we've opened our business up five years later, oh, well, now it's illegal? Change it all. And by the way, this has taken place between Memorial Day and Labor Day. It's not taking place in January or February. I'm going to be honest, I don't have time to be here this time of year. I talked to a couple of other package stores, and they're going, "It's summer." I'm not going to go to a meeting. But what do you recommend we do? Should we just wonder what the next ruling is going to be the next time somebody walks in? My recommendation is you ask town council whether the town should be in the business of regulating speech. I have no problem with the sign code bylaw that regulates the size of the sign, the number of the signs, where they can be placed, safety, everything else. But do you have enough employees in this town to go out and regulate the speech on each individual sign? Well, Budweiser's okay, but I don't like Captain Morgan. You know, poggies are okay, but I don't like plants. Once we start regulating speech, where does it end? And to be perfectly honest, do you even have the legal right anymore? When this bylaw was written many, many years ago, and 20 years ago or so, you have put that in, it was about 25 or, I think, the early '80s, they put in the brand name thing, because they didn't want everybody to have a Budweiser, a Pepsi, or Coke sign in the building anymore, because that's what everyone had back then. But now it's being applied to my window signs, my marquee. We'll all come in here, I'm sure you'll have 100 businesspeople in here in the next month to all ask for variances, because you know how many people have... Drive in here this evening, there's a place in front of a restaurant downtown that says you can order online. Ordering online's not perishable. I was down in Woods Hole, pie in the sky, this thing, free Wi-Fi. Is Wi-Fi perishable? Where are we going to stop regulating speech? So I'm here to get advice. Hopefully, I won't interrupt these nice gentlemen's hearing. Hopefully, they'll get to put their sign out tonight. But I received this in the mail on Friday. I knew they're having a hearing tonight, and I said, "I'd really love to have some advice here, what you expect the businesspeople to have." They have these hundreds and hundreds of signs out here in the town. Many of us have had them five, 10, 15 years. And evidently, we now have an employee that has time to go out and regulate what supposedly has been on the books for 27 or 28 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, I think coming up probably within the next three to six months, hopefully, because it's overdue, is a bylaw review committee is supposed to start. And that's under the auspices of Mr. Duffy. And when that happens, you know, maybe people will be heard, they'll take testimony to make some of these changes, right?
Okay, good.
I was just going to say, I mean, I guess, of course, through you, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, these cases are going to come from us, in front of us individually. It's like Mr. Gore is a very well-meaning person. He has a job to do. He'll make decisions. He's sort of like the lower court, and we're like the SJC. We can overrule it by issuing a variance, which I think in this case, I'm in favor of, so...
And I think let's take one issue at a time. And we'll deal with Mr. Anderson's issue right after we finish dealing with this, and we can talk about that a little bit.
Just to clarify the motion, that we'd be granting a variance, it would still fit another category of a sandwich board sign, so it'd have to fit all the other stipulations, with the exception of being limited to perishable and being limited to the 15 feet to the main entrance. But still needs to be the same size and needs to be brought in on a daily basis. But still needs to be the same size and needs to be brought in on the other basis.
Is that?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Motion, okay. So, no further discussion? Yes, Brett?
Just thought that, and I thank you, Mr. Anderson, for bringing this to our attention. And this is, well, forgive the pun, it's the can of worms that I don't think we should be opening. I think if we were to define perishable as something that requires refrigeration, and just to leave it at that, I think he could have the sign within 15 feet of his door and we could avoid a potential, like I said, a can of worms here. I, you know, you all know my opinion about the sign code. We've had that discussion before, so.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second.
I forgot the motion.
The motion was that we issue a variance for both the term perishable, as well as the distance from his front door. Everything else in the, in the code would be adhered to for the sandwich board.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So the motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Can we just take a brief minute here to discuss Mr. Anderson's comments? Maybe it would be, I'm sure a lot of this has been stimulated by our new zoning enforcement officer who's out on the street. And maybe it would be opportunistic for Mr. Suso to have a meeting with Mr. Gore and see how we're going to proceed down there. Not that anyone wants anyone to violate anything, but it might be a good opportunity to bring in maybe a few of the businesses that are going to be affected and find out a way that we don't have to go through a mass type of variance process, because it is within the right of everybody to apply for a variance.
Happy to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Just so you know, there is another letter I didn't bring with me, but the first letter also tells us, we must take the sign down, all the signs, until we receive a variance, if we apply for one. And in the meantime, it's between $2,500 and $200 per day, per violation. So if I put up the word Powerball on my sign Wednesday night, that will eventually cost me $200 per day. The selectmen aren't defining perishable, so the business members of this community have no idea what the definition of it is, and I can't get it from Ladio Gore, our Building Commissioner. But the other issue is, should we just all take our signs down in the summertime and tell?
And.
Or face the fines?
I'm going to give you a couple of words of advice. First of all, board can't take up your issue because it's not in the agenda.
Well, the perishable part.
Just let me finish. Can't take up that, this issue because it's not in the agenda. We've asked the town manager to look into this, and you will be contacted and to find out a path of how we plan on proceeding based on the, the staff.
In the meantime, we should remove all these signs.
I don't, I'm not giving you direction either way. I, I don't have that authority. We set policy and procedure based off of something that is on the agenda, unfortunately.
Could I ask what the policy is on the definition of perishable?
My, my definition, it depends on what, it is not written into the sign code bylaw, the actual definition.
And we won't have, we won't get one from the selectmen at any point in time, so we have something to go by?
We don't have that authority to change the sign code bylaw. The sign code bylaw is changed by town meeting. We can issue a variance, but not change, change a bylaw. It's a bylaw, it's, it's enacted by the Congress. You are an astute member of town meeting.
I, I, I agree, it's just, at this time of year, now that the enforcement has started after Memorial Day, we're between a rock and a hard place.
Your comments have not gone on deaf ears.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the can of worms has been opened. I think, you know, the, the sign code does not define perishable, but I think, given the fact that we issued a variance and we discussed the issue of perishable, and of course, that was one of the questions with the variance, is it without, is it, I think, inside our purview this evening to at least provide some guidance and provide a consistent definition as to what perishable is? Or are we outside our bounds here when it comes to the open meeting law? I mean, these are some of the questions that I have. And I think Mr. Anderson brings up some very salient points.
You are, you are astute of the open meeting law, so don't go there.
Well, I just don't think that that's what we're here for tonight, is to define perishable. I think it's definitely within the Building Commissioner's realm or the Design Review Committee, but not us. We, our only role here in all of this design review is the, what are we here for?
Variance.
Variance. So I, but I think you, you can, and, and maybe we could ask the town manager to have a conversation with the Building Commissioner and say, these are issues and he needs to think about them, because if, if, if his department is going out in the summertime enforcing the sandwich board, I've seen them all over the place, too. And, and whether they comply or not, I don't know, because I don't have the definition in front of me. But I think there needs to be a conversation about the, the, the bylaw and how it, how it is enforced, perhaps. And if there are, if it's causing problems for business owners where they can't, they can't conform to the bylaw because it doesn't, it doesn't go along with their own business practices, then maybe the Building Commissioner has to consider that. But that's not for us, I think.
I, I can make a comment, maybe that'll help you and Mr. Anderson, if, if the discussions with the town manager and the Building Department don't come to fruition, I could say to the board that I will put this on an agenda item as our next meeting. The description, the, the definition of the word perishable, if it's necessary.
And include logo signs. And I think that's.
And logo signs, yeah.
The brand.
Well, I've got to check with council with, I'm sure a definition is one thing, but I don't know the logo thing. We'll, we'll ask council, yes.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, that during these conversations with Mr. Suso and the Building Commissioner, explaining to them, to him basically, the decision we've made and how we feel about it, and maybe that he could get, have a meeting into our office and sort of explain, you know, how the selectmen feel about it. So, you know, I don't know if that would affect the enforcement and all, but just, so we'd probably basically issue another variance if it came in front of us again, is what I'm saying. So, anyway, it'd be good to get together and discuss it.
Brett, I'd just like to make the point that we're not defining perishable, but at the same time, we've just issued a variance without, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, identifying why the strict application of the bylaw was impractical, impossible, or would create undue hardship. So, quite frankly, I think we're sort of treading in areas that we're really, I think, making it difficult not only for ourselves, but for the general public, where we issue variances without justifying them. And then when individuals ask us to define or to help define aspects of the bylaw on which we are basing our decisions, but we refuse to do that, we're really sending some confused messages here, Mr. Chairman.
I, I have no problem defining it, but am I prepared to define it this evening? I, I don't think I am. I was prepared to vote for a variance. I don't know if I was prepared to define that particular word, so. Anybody else? We'll move on. Next up is a vote to affirm an appointment of Susan Ripley as the Town Treasurer. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As the board's aware, I have advised the board of my intention to appoint Acting Town Treasurer Susan Ripley to the Town Treasurer position for the Town of Falmouth. And I would come this evening asking for the board's concurrences that, in that pursuant to the Town Charter, as that is a requirement of the Charter. If I may, Mr. Chairman, a couple of summary items. Susan is with us here this evening, and I wanted to give a few summary comments about how, how she has served with distinction as our Acting Town Treasurer. Susan was hired in June of 2010 as the Town of Falmouth's Assistant Town Treasurer. Her previous experience in the Town of Yarmouth has proven quite valuable for Falmouth, as our current Town Treasurer at that time, who was Carol Martin, was indeed preparing to retire when Susan was hired. Susan has taken on the responsibilities of the Treasurer since day one of her employment. In her time as Acting Town Treasurer, Susan has had many accomplishments for the Town of Falmouth, and a few highlights are in order. She has, acting as Town Treasurer, has met all federal and state deadlines for W-2s, 1099s, and taxes, met all debt payment deadlines for which the town is responsible. Susan has created a debt schedule for budgeting purposes. Her stewardship has resulted in clean audit reports yearly within those areas over which she has oversight. Due to advanced refunding, was able to save the town $730,000, which has been documented. Also responsible for initiating a lockbox setup with the conjunction with the Collector's Office to work with the Century Bank for off-site locations. Worked with a team to evaluate the new financial software for the town and school, which we're in the process of processing through procurement as we speak. Currently involved in updating the tax title process. Also, Susan has been responsible for the retooling and streamlining of the processes and procedures for the Treasurer's Office overall. In my seven months as Town Manager, it's been my pleasure to work with Susan as Acting Town Treasurer. As I've noted, she served with distinction. It's my pleasure to recommend her permanent appointment to the Town Treasurer position to this board this evening. And Susan, as I noted, is in attendance, and I would like to recognize her and thank her for being here this evening as well.
Yes?
I just wanted to say, Mr. Chairman, I, I think I've met her twice. She sort of reminds me of the IT department. You know, they're so important to the town, but you never see them, they're behind the scenes. I'm glad everyone can see who she is, put her face with the name, and I will wholeheartedly support you. And on behalf of this selectman and a taxpayer, I want to thank you very much for what you've completed.
I'd like to make a couple of comments, so. Very, very similar to many of you, I sometimes am a devil in the detail. And when Susan first made some presentations to the board, I had asked some specific questions about seeing specific rates of those, those who we did not choose, as when we were issuing bonds. And she has been a devil in the detail in providing that information on an ongoing basis and has saved the town, to this point, very much a lot of money because of the way that she has been able to issue the bonds in this community and been aggressive in reallocating our debt in the proper fashion. So I'm in support of this as well. Anybody else? I look for a motion to affirm.
I would move to affirm the appointment of Susan Ripley as the Falmouth Town Treasurer.
Second.
Any further discussion of the motion?
With pleasure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have, unanimous. Susan, would you like to come up and say a couple of words, so folks out there know exactly who you are? And our, the press has a couple of pictures he wants to take.
Okay. Not my favorite, but. What I did want to say is, you know, thank you for the appointment as Town Treasurer. I've enjoyed every moment of it, I can honestly tell you that. I want to thank everyone who's helped me. Many of them know who they are, but there's a few, the Town of Yarmouth, and Sue Harvey, who works with me day to day. And I really look forward to continuing working with Julian, our Town Manager, Heather, our Assistant Town Manager, and I'm looking forward to the new Finance Director. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay. Next up, a vote to approve Community Preservation Committee projects.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board. I'm Peter Clark, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, and we're very pleased to be here tonight to take a first step with you in terms of recommending to you actions with the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. A quick history, when the town adopted the Community Preservation Act, as, as the successor to the land bank, you know that we had a mission to do affordable housing, historic preservation, as well as continuing with open space. And we have done that through projects that were brought to town meeting. I hope you will remember that we have worked with you with the Retention Fund and the Affordable Housing Development Fund. Those were two narrowly-defined funds that were set up so that actions could be taken more rapidly than the town meeting process would allow. The Retention Fund to renew old forms of deed restrictions, we used that three times with you, recommending to you and having your vote to approve. With the Affordable Housing Development Fund, it was for pre-development and development money for affordable housing. We had you made recommendations and you approved four uses of the Affordable Housing Development Fund. And then in 2010, we took the first steps through town meeting to get home rule legislation to set up a broader fund that would have the retention and the development components, but also a broader use. And that set in motion the approval in June of 2011 by the legislature of our Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. You approved broad guidelines for that in the fall of 2001. Town Meeting joined the retention and development fund monies into this new fund in November of 2011. And just last Monday, you approved formal legal documents that helped finalize this. So that brings us to the point of now being able to bring to you the first two projects to be considered under that fund. You will hear from Patty Haney, who is our CPC Vice Chair, the Chair of the Community Housing Subcommittee that dealt very heavily with the guidelines and with these projects. I want to thank Barb Snyder, the past Chair, who is a proponent of this fund. Deborah Converse, here as our Community Preservation Assistant Planner, has worked very hard on this. And we want to thank the Manager's Office and the legal, the Town Council's Office for lots of help to put this all together. You are being asked to look at a loan and a grant. Both are being brought to you by TRI, The Resource Incorporated, and Michael Galasso is here to be part of that presentation. We all hope that no application will ever take as long through this fund as these two did. Mr. Galasso and all of us found very frustrating this kind of first experience of putting the fund together, finding things we had to smooth out, and it took a long time. But we're very pleased to be here. And I'd like to have Patty Haney come up and speak to you briefly about the loan and the grant and the conditions that apply to that. We are committed to this fund and will maintain it. This is our start. Patty?
Thank you. I'll try to keep this short since it's getting late. Okay. We'll start with the, the grant agreement. Now, you have that all in front of you with all the legal stuff. I'll tell you what's important to look at on this one. The background of this is that this is going to be an outright grant to help purchase a property that's been empty and foreclosed for over a year, maybe two. It's in really rough shape. So to purchase it back from the bank, TRI will be doing that, and the money that the CPC is recommending will be for part of the renovation. It needs pretty much everything. It will be sold then to a family or individual, up to 80% of area median income, which 80% for one person is $44,950, and for a family of three, it would be $57,800. So that's not poverty level at all. The special conditions that we're adding to this particular one would be to provide pest inspection and any pest damage report, repair everything and document that. There is water in the basement, and obviously, that's of great concern, because if you have somebody buying an affordable, they're not going to be able to afford to fix the problem. So, part of this is that the source of the water infiltration has to be identified and controlled. There's also some mold in the house. TRI will be required to remove all the mold and provide a mold abatement report and a certificate of complete removal by a certified mold specialist. Also, there is possibly some lead paint. There'll be a lead paint removal report and a certified inspection from a certified removal company. The unit will have to be affirmatively marketed, which is, it's an industry term, and that is to ensure that it's fairly sold to. is to ensure that it's fairly sold to people that are on a list. He has to provide the name of the Affordable Housing Monitoring Agent, since, as we know, that's been an issue in the town here and there, and provide construction documents and specs. The biggest part is that he's going to have to complete the LAU process. An LAU is similar to a LIP, which is a way to make your affordable countable on your SHI. And that's a step that's been skipped pretty often. So you have these affordable units, but they don't count on your SHI. If you're going to have the unit, you should have it count.
SHI as well?
Oh, the housing inventory for the state. And that counts towards your 10% for your 40B and having more control over those things. It's kind of a lengthy process, and you guys will be involved in that because you'll have to sign off on it when it's complete. But it fits the bill, and these are some of the things we learned along the way in making these documents. He has to have a project schedule approved by the CPC, and there is an issue with that particular property because across the street is the Lawrence Lynch pits, the sand pits, and, you know, it's conceivable that a little kid could fall into the pits or something. It isn't on the property. But Mr. Galasso has agreed to speak to the people at Lawrence Lynch and see if we can come up with some sort of fence or something that would make it a little safer. So that is the Stevens Lane property. The Shore Street property...
Excuse me, would you like to take each property? Are they going to be separate votes or they...
Would you like to do that?
I think it might not complicate the matter if we do want it to do.
Okay. Do you have any questions about that property?
Yes?
I don't know if there are questions specific to the property, but I do have some questions. There's a loan and a grant.
Right.
Are they, one is for one property, one is for the other?
Correct.
And is this for the loan?
This is a grant.
This is the grant, okay. So why a grant versus a loan?
Okay, good question. This is an affordable ownership. So if TRI is purchasing this property for $100,000, and they're putting, you know, $98,000 worth of work into replacing everything inside, and they sell it as an affordable for $150,000, which is all they could sell it for, then if we loaned the money to fix it up, who's going to pay it back? What you're doing basically on this one is buying a deed restriction in perpetuity. And so that's the reason for this being a grant.
I have another question.
Yes, go ahead.
The monitoring agent?
Uh huh.
Is that something the town can have a say in? Because I know there are some monitoring agents that have not at all done their jobs, and there are some monitoring agents that are quite good at what they do. Does the town, in giving this grant and even in providing the loan as well, can we stipulate which monitoring agents we would prefer to see or we would, or say that we would not accept certain monitoring agents because they have a terrible track record?
Excellent question again. When the LAU is done, which is the local action unit, you have to sign off on that, and that whole plan is in the LAU. And so if you see something you don't like in there, like that, then you have every right to question that and work it out with the developer.
Okay. Yes, Doug?
I have a very minor detail just on Exhibit G, which was referred to as a non-collision clause.
Yes.
And just want to make sure that...
We just don't want to bump into anything, Doug. You know, it should be collusion. That was caught today.
Okay.
Any other questions? So can I have a motion in the first location is, again?
55 Stevens Lane.
Can I have a motion for 55 Stevens Lane?
I'll move the approval of the grant agreement for 55 Stevens Lane between the town of Falmouth and the Resourcing Court.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion for the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it. Okay, go ahead to the next one.
All right, moving on, Shore Street. This property is at the very beginning of Shore Street. You can sort of see it from the loading dock of Barbo's. It's been vacant for several years also, and it's a bank foreclosure. This one will be a loan of $183,000 for renovation of the building, and it will be made into three legal units after it's rezoned. It has been three units for years, but we found out that it's not legally. So there will be a zoning issue there, which is Mr. TRI's responsibility. And it will be rented to families and individuals who are at 60% of AMI. Now, 60%, and this will be in the paper and it'll lay the fears of the neighbors, 60% for a single person is still $34,500. You know, that's decent money. And for a family of three, $44,340. And the rent for the single person would be $924 a month. That's a lot of money. So this isn't going to be extremely low income and ruin the neighborhood whatsoever. It's probably about what people pay, you know, as it is in town. This is going to be called a loan so that if the property is sold or refinanced, the town then is in line for any possible proceeds that would be beyond what's allowable. So it's not a loan that gets paid back every year or every month. We only ask for money back if the building changes hands or is refinanced. So that's the meaning of the loan, and calling it a loan gives us that right. It will, even if it changes hands, it will be deed restricted in perpetuity. And the special conditions on that, all financing for the project completion has to be in place before any money is dispersed from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. Mr. Galasso is going to the county to talk to them about home funds, but he doesn't have them secured yet because he has to get ours first. So we make a commitment, but the money doesn't come through until all of the financing is in place. The local action plan has to be completed and approved. Again, deed restriction for eligible income shall not exceed 60% of AMI as published by HUD, and that changes year to year, obviously. All approval required by Falmouth Historic District Commission have to be obtained. So he's going to, it is in a historic area. So he's going to have to go in front of them and satisfy them and use the materials that are appropriate. He will have to have a project schedule approved by the CPC and any permitted encumbrances acceptable to the CPC. Any questions on this one?
I just have kind of a little detailed question.
Sure.
On the loan agreement on the first page. It lists the borrower, The Resource Inc., with a principal address in South Dennis. But on Page Two, it gives an address of Palmer Avenue, 200 Palmer Avenue. I just wondered...
They move around.
They move around. Well, I just didn't know if you were aware that there were two addresses.
We have an office. Come up with this. Michael Palmer, yes? Good evening. Michael Glass, I'm a project manager with TRI, and thank you for taking these projects this evening. TRI has a number of offices. We run a number of affordable housing programs throughout the Cape and Islands. We do have an office that I manage here in Falmouth at 200 Palmer Avenue. Our main office is in Dennis, so most of the legal work will probably go to the Dennis office.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Yes, Brett?
The zoning issue?
Yes.
We're assuming that we can get three units there, but the zoning isn't approved. So how is that going to work out? What if the planning board or ZVA says no?
Then it's a no. He's got to get the zoning done.
Okay, so this is continued upon getting the zoning?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Any other questions? Yes?
Just want to clarify language. The loan agreement uses the term, on the top bullet on page, for local action plan must be completed. The grant uses the term, complete the LAU process. It's the same process. And so that too would come back to you, just as you have heard that the LAU would come to you as a condition of the grant. The LAU, what is listed as local action plan is the local action unit process, and that would come back.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Do I have a motion? This is for the Shore Street location.
I will move approval of the loan for the 20 Shore Street.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Sure. Come right up.
Hi, Mark Finer in Trotting Park Road, Precinct Six. I was at the CPC meeting when this project was first proposed. It's on Shore Street. Most people know Shore Street. I mean, most people have to work all their life to get a home south of Route 28 or on Shore Street. This particular piece of property, it's said that it's been vacant for a couple of years, which is true, but I know of three different individuals who have tried to purchase this property from the bank, but it's being held for this particular TCI or whatever his company is, something to do with Wells Fargo and affordable housing, on the point of affordable housing. When Mr. Galasso first discussed this project, he described it himself as expensive affordable housing. Ms. Haney has also described it as the best they can do is basically prepare it at market rate. When there are other people out there in the public that are looking at this property and want to develop it themselves, and I assume they're going to rent it at market rate too, why are we spending $96,000 a bedroom on expensive affordable housing when Community Preservation Committee is supposed to be promoting affordable housing? I think the whole thing is oxymoronic. I think it's a poor use of taxpayer money. It's just too much, costs too much. Thank you.
I think it's important to note that this is going to be rented at 60% of the median price, if I'm not mistaken. So it would actually be clarified as affordable units. Yes, Nancy? Did you have your hand up, Nancy? Yes, go right ahead.
My name's Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth, Precinct Five. I have looked under two circumstances at this piece of property because it's been before... I'm a member of the Falmouth Historical Commission. I'm not speaking for them, but the fact that I'm on the Historical Commission was one of the things that made me aware of this property because it's been on the agenda of the Historic District Commission. And the Community Preservation Committee is not only interested in affordable housing, but they're also interested in historic preservation. And this may be expensive affordable housing, but if you look at the, if you go and look at the location of this particular property, you will see that this piece of property as is in the start of the Shore Street Historic District as you go off of Main Street. And there are many town-wide economic advantages of having this piece of property as a respectable and well-presented piece of property. This is good for business as well as affordable housing. This is up the street from Shore Street Acres. This is not an area you want to fall into disrepair. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Clark?
I just want you to be clear about numbers. This project is a three-bedroom, a two-bedroom, and a one-bedroom, three units, five bedrooms. So some of the numbers that were just used are very inaccurate.
This is a motion and a second. Any further public comment? Any more comment from the board? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it, unanimous. Thank you very much. Next up...
Could I just say something before Patty Haney leaves? There's, later on in our agenda, we have a under-interview vote and appoint. We have Community Preservation Committee, and that's Patty Haney. But Patty is appointed to the Community Preservation Committee by the Falmouth Housing Authority, not by the Board of Selectmen. So she really doesn't need to stay and be interviewed by us because we don't appoint, if that's agreeable. So you don't have to stay in case you thought you had to. Thanks.
Next up is the vote to adopt a resolution to support for Taladine Instruments, Inc. Expansion Project. Mr. Amet?
Mr. Murphy, thank you very much, members of the board. I'm Bob Amet. I'm a Falmouth attorney, and I represent Taladine Instruments. Taladine has a facility of about 28,000 square feet in North Falmouth on Edgerton Drive, and they propose an addition of around 30,200 square feet with possible future additions of about another 14,000 square feet. That amount of development was previously approved by the Cape Cut Commission, 30,000 square feet of it for the EDIC before EDIC transferred about eight acres to Taladine in 2011, and a previous project that was supported by the Selectmen in 2008 of 15,000 square feet. And what Taladine proposes to do is to add to its existing building indicated in yellow and to add this amount of expansion at this time. Now, because the project is over 10,000 square feet, Cape Cut Commission jurisdiction is triggered. If Falmouth had a land use vision map, as was discussed at last week's meeting, review by the Cape Cut Commission might not be required. That's something that you ought to work on. And because there is no land use vision map, the regulations, the Cape Cut Commission require that a municipal certification be obtained, and that's what we're here for before you tonight. As I said in my request to you, the municipal certification is an endorsement by the Selectmen with a resolution stating that the proposed location is consistent with both the goals of the town's local comprehensive plan as well as the town's capital facilities and infrastructure planning or our plan. Essentially, the question is, is this proposed development properly located? Will it stress the town's infrastructure? And the answer is that it is properly located and will not stress the town's infrastructure. It's located in the light industrial zone in North Falmouth, the Edgerton Drive, the so-called Raymond Technology Park area, which in the local comprehensive plan is specifically identified as an area for future economic development. This is sort of a hidden location at the end of the road backing up on the superhighway with the railroad right of way to Otis on one side and open space of a subdivision on the other. There is a convenient and adequate roadway system which does not need to be expanded. There's town water that serves Edgerton Drive. I'm told that there's now even a regional transit authority bus that goes up Route 28A in the area, and the bike path is nearby. The purpose of the local comprehensive plan includes the balancing of infrastructure expenses and tax revenue, and this development is going to increase the tax revenue to the town. There is every reason to be proud that Taladine is in our town. They are a high-tech scientific research industry with presently 184 employees, with the opportunity to increase that in the years to come there and do internationally significant work. And I'd like to thank Mr. Suso and town planner Brian Curry for their assistance recently in dealing with the Cape Cut Commission. They have actually made a significant difference in moving our project along. So I hope that the town will, the Selectmen... So I hope that the town will, the Selectmen, will vote to endorse this project and send a letter that goes even far beyond the mayor's certification that the location is consistent, but indicate to the Cape Cod Commission your strong support for this project because of the economic development goals that will be advanced. Thank you.
Pat?
Yes, you mentioned future employment. Do you have any idea how many jobs this building will create?
Well, as I said, they presently have about 180 employees in Falmouth. It will certainly in the fairly near future go over 200. The potential expansion on the site with the purchase of the EDIC property, Taladine now has a contiguous property of almost 20 acres. The site, particular site that this addition on is about 16 acres. Taladine also owns this vacant lot, and they have a 10,000-square-foot building over here. The potential development on the 16 acres under the regulations would approach 300. I don't think we'll see that growth real quickly, but this is a great opportunity for Falmouth and Taladine.
Any other questions? I'd just like to make a couple of comments. We're often talking in this community about jobs and good jobs. When we developed the original tech park, we all had great hopes and aspirations that we would have this type of industry that would go there and provide a large sum of jobs. Being the board's representative on the EDIC, I know, you know, past chairman Flynn, who also served on that board, was instrumental in helping us develop this additional tech park. And anytime we can get this kind of good jobs in this community, it's a win for all of us. Thank you. So I'd look to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board's Selectmen have reviewed the application for hardship exemption under Section 23 of the Cape Cod Commission Act of Taladine Instruments, Inc., for its proposed construction of up to 44,850 square feet of new commercial space to be located at 49 Edgerton Drive, Falmouth, and hereby votes and resolves that pursuant to Section ED 1.3 of the Cape Cod Regional Policy Plan Revised May 2011. The proposed location is consistent with both the goals of the town's local comprehensive plan, as well as the town's capital facilities and infrastructure planning.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Any public comment? Yes.
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth, Precinct Five. This, of course, started before Taladine as Bentos, which is about 50 years old now due to the efforts of Sam Raymond and his company. I would like to comment on this mapping issue. I have great concerns about the current Cape Cod Commission light, which we now have. And although the town has not, does not have this new mapping, which enables the town to do away with a level of Cape Cod Commission review, I think we should be very careful. There is a large building planned on, well, I always get those streets mixed up, that there's Spring Bar's Road, but there's that sweet street that swings around that you might think should be a continuation of Jones Road. In that area, there is a large building planned there. And I don't know, avoiding the Cape Cod Commission is necessarily always good for the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Mr.
I just wanted to make two comments. When the town has a land use vision map, what it means is that they have worked to lay out and plan for the town designated growth areas, areas of the town that the town has accepted as areas that where growth could occur. So all that planning and all that approval would have been done as part of the land use vision map. But we take your comments very seriously, Nancy. Thank you. The other comment I wanted to make was several years ago, there was a point in time when Bentos was having some financial difficulties, and they, at that time, owned all of that land that Taladine is now purchasing. And they came to the EDIC and said, and said to the EDIC, "Look, we have all this land, and now we're sort of land poor, and we want to know if you can help us out." So at that time, the EDC actually bought, I think it was over, somewhere between 1 and 2 million, for the properties that Bentos owned. And then the EDIC then began to market those other properties. And so it was a really win-win. It was a win-win for Bentos, because they then had the cash that they needed to continue on, to eventually form that partnership with Taladine. The EDIC was in a position where they could actually market the properties and have businesses located there that made sense in that area. So actually, in the end, everyone benefited.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next up, is vote to authorize the town manager to proceed with request for proposal for Little Pond Stormwater and ECO toilets. This is for two RFPs.
Eco toilets.
Eco toilets. Sorry. Would someone like to present what this is? Yes.
Eric. Excuse me, not to go back into the woodshed. Did you miss the improvement of the health officer?
No, no, we're getting to those interviews yet. We have not gotten to those yet. Thank you.
Good evening. Eric Turgington, Chairman of the Town's Water Quality Management Committee. We're bringing to you tonight the last two RFPs that the town meeting back in April of 2011 requested us to pursue on behalf of the town. It's been a major educational process for us to wrap our brains around each of these different proposals and put them together in a way that they'll, they had to be done and that they'll do the town some good. We have several of the committee members here today, including Ron Zweig and Steve, the other Steves downstairs, and particularly Wynne Monroe and, his wife? No. Wynne Monroe, who recently celebrated her 50th anniversary and went to Europe and spent a good deal of the time there investigating eco-toilets. So the, he is our eco-toilet expert, and if there are any questions on that subject tonight, we'd be happy to answer them. We hope this will be the end of our role in preparing these RFPs and yours, and then to get them out on the street and get people working on these projects, so that we can come back to the town with real numbers regarding these real alternatives and which ones are going to be cost-effective and which ones we want to pursue. We'll be here next month with, we hope, a completed comprehensive wastewater management plan, and we hope that meets the desires of the Department of Environmental Protection. More importantly, we hope it meets the desires of this board and of the voters of the town of Falmouth. It will provide a roadmap for the town to address the problems of the asteroids that we all agree have to be addressed, and we look forward to bringing that to you.
So, first of all, does the board have any questions of Mr. Turgington while he's here?
Just a quick one.
Yes, sir.
When we discuss eco-toilts with this RFP, is that for every unit? Or is it just a few?
There's a number of different kinds of eco-toilets, and help me out here, Wynne, if I need. There's a number that are currently approved by the state, and we'll be looking closely at them. There's also others that have potential, and we'll be looking at some of them, but we're basically asking the consultant to make a judgment as to which ones the town should pursue in more detail.
And will include, could include composting toilets?
Absolutely.
Some eco ones just use less water. I'm just curious.
Right. That definitely includes those.
Thank you very much.
So if I could ask the board to look for a motion, why don't we separate each of these? One would be a request for proposal for Little Pond Stormwater, and then the second one would be a RFP for the eco-toilets. So would someone mind making the first, one motion first? The stormwater?
I move to authorize the town manager to proceed with request for proposals for Little Pond Stormwater.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion, any discussion from the board? Any public comment? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Next issue is looking for another motion on the eco-toilets.
I would move to authorize the town manager to proceed with request for proposals for eco-toilets.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Any public comment? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Okay. The next item up is committee reappointments. If the board remembers, last week, we took under advisement, rather than we read each and every one of these out, maybe we would, well, look to originally the whole list. It goes from up to 32 different appointments. Would the board like me to read each and every one, and we could go from there?
Do you have to read the everyone's name? Or just the name?
Since we read them last week. I think it's good to read each and every one.
Since you did read them into the minutes last week, and I certainly have not received any public comment about any of them, could we just move the approval of the appointments as read?
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Anyone else have any further comment in regard to that? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next group is, we have some interviews this evening. First interview, the Board of Selectmen has a policy to interview all regulatory boards, so even if there is not an incumbent for those regulatory boards, just so the reason that we are interviewing these folks is because we have that policy. First one would be the Board of Health. This is for Gail Harkness, whose term expires on 6/30/2000. This would be for a term expiring 6/30/15. There is no other candidate, but if you could come forward and tell us a little bit about why you want to do this, it's just a quick interview. Thank you, Gail.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I do have to say that the Board of Health members are meeting downstairs at the moment analyzing the data from the testimonies. So we've been running back and forth a bit. Sorry. I'm Gail Harkness, and I am asking for another three-year appointment on the Board of Health. At present, I am Chair of the Board of Health, and I am the only person who has a health background that is on the Board of Health. The others all have more or less environmental background, sanitation, or engineering. I think I have presented to you before, but I am a professor emeritus of public health and nursing at the University of Connecticut. I also was an assistant professor of community health medicine at the UConn School of Medicine in Hartford. I had an appointment with the University of Leeds in England, where I served as a research facilitator, and I also was the head of the Department of Nursing there. I also have an adjunct appointment with the Boston College School of Nursing. And also, a new one, the Barnstable County Public Health Nursing. Throughout my career, I have focused my teaching on research and service on infectious diseases and emerging infectious diseases. The credentials, experiences, and skills that I've gotten through this have been very, very helpful to me, and I believe also to the Board of Health. We have a diverse list of issues that are on our agenda right now. The most pressing issues facing Falmouth and other Cape Cod towns involve the health effects, well, perhaps not the first one that I have listed, which is the wind turbine exposure, but the rest, wastewater, water quality, nutrient management, and solid waste management, are all pressing environmental issues. At every meeting, we attempt to find the best possible solutions to the problems associated with such things as septic system placement on very small lots or in close proximity to coastal waters. We have, I personally have attended many of the solid waste management meetings. Other, we've sort of divvied up the work on the Board of Health, and each of us more or less has a lead in a particular issue, and mine is solid waste management and also as Chair of the Board of Health. We've debated alternative technology, pros and cons, enforcement of testing. We have experts coming to us for presentations. Joint meetings have been held with the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board and Conservation Commission on various issues. And the debates always seem to continue. One of my foremost interests is in emergency planning and community preparedness for disasters. And I am currently the Board of Health representative to the Medical Reserve Corps, which is the emergency organization, the organization of medical personnel that will respond in emergencies. And the structure of the MRC has changed recently, so that there's a direct link with Boards of Health. And many, many members are getting involved every day in the various types of mainly health prevention of various diseases, disease prevention, and maintaining the health of our population. My prior research initiatives in Lyme disease prevention has led me to attempt different primary prevention methods in the schools and also with the real estate agents in getting information out to renters. TIC testing services are available at the Board of Health, and over 2,000 TIC identification cards have been distributed and so forth. There are many other activities where my contributions, I think, have been very helpful. That has included making arrangements for the Community Needle Sharps Collection, which was just initiated, discussions of food safety, review of recycling procedures, and many more. I have thoroughly enjoyed being on the Board of, the Board of Health. Having been in the teaching arena for as long as I have been in the past, it's wonderful to be in a place where you can watch things really happen and get things done. So I believe I've contributed a unique perspective on the Board of Health deliberations, and I would love to be appointed for another term. So thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Just want to hold on one more. Anyone else have any questions here? Fred?
No questions, but Ms. Harkness, thank you for your contributions and for your willingness to serve again. I agree. I think she's a wonderful addition to the Board of Health.
Thank you very much.
Well, I would just echo that. I think your education and experience and the great interest and enthusiasm that you bring creates that diversity on the Board of Health. It's so important for the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board? David?
I don't really attend too many Board of Health meetings. I attended the one a few weeks ago here, when you had all the butters in, and I just was very impressed the way you were in the meeting, very fair and very sincere about what they were talking about. I just wanted to say that. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Your comments mean a lot to me.
What is the board's pleasure?
I move appointment of Dr. Harkness for a three-year term ending in 2015.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Ms. Harkness, thank you very much. Next up is the Historical Commission. Nancy Hayward, if you can just give us a brief update of why you'd like to be back on the Historical Commission.
My name, my name is Nancy Hayward. I am a member of the Falmouth Historical Commission. I am the Vice Chairman of the Historical Commission.
I am the Vice Chairman of the Historical Commission. I would like to quickly say that I hope you have firmly in your mind that I'm applying to be reappointed to the Historical Commission. This is not the Historic District Commission, which deals only with historic districts. The Historical Commission deals with all other historic resources in the town besides those in the Historic District. Why would I like to be reappointed? I actually like working on the Historical Commission. The purpose of the Commission is to preserve our historic resources. Currently, we are working on material from Larson Fisher Survey of the town, which was to extend the listings of historical houses in the town between eighteen fifty and nineteen thirty to complement the earlier houses which had been placed on the Cultural Resources Inventory in the town. The Larson Fisher Survey covered Toby Lane, Monont. And we are currently, we're finished with those areas. We're currently working on the Belvedere Plain or just Belvedere between Main Street and Clinton Avenue and King Street and Scranton Avenue. We have held hearings on the houses that we have put on a list of houses which we feel are, should be preferably preserved. We've held hearings with the residents in those houses. And we're about finished with Belvedere. We'll go to Gansett Woods in Woods Hole and then to McGansett, the North Falmouth area. I'd like to continue with this work. There are other projects that we're working on, like documenting the Stone Dock in West Falmouth. We have work that we have completed, a survey of water-powered archaeological sites in Falmouth, which has some loose ends of signage that we should put up but have not gotten around to. I like being on the Commission. It has some weak points. This will be my third reappointment to a full term. I served a part term. I had attended Historical Commission meetings before I applied to become a member. I would like to say that we have been a five-member board, but we are losing a member. I do not know if they have sent in their official resignation. I hope that they have received that word from the Chairman, that they need to do this before you can take any action on filling a slot.
Any questions from the Board? Yes.
Just one. Ms. Hayward, I recall that you were opposed to the movement a few years back to reduce the size of the Commission
That's correct.
from seven to five.
That's correct.
How has that worked out? Do you think it's, it's worked out well, or it hasn't, or?
I think it has worked out well. I still think when you have a five-member board, you have to have four people for a quorum. I, I think having a four-person quorum is better than a three-person quorum making decisions. I think we have mostly managed to have a quorum, and that's very valuable for a Commission. So I'm, I'm accepting of the five-member board. I would like to keep it full, and it is my understanding that we will be having a vacancy.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? What's the Board's pleasure? Can we take it under advisement or make a motion this evening as well?
I would move to appoint Nancy Hayward for another three-year term on the Historical Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion for the Board? Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? The ayes have it. Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you taking action. Thank you.
The next up, Community Preservation Committee. This is one of the Board of Selectment's appointments. Ken Buckland.
Good evening. I want to first thank you very much for this last year I was able to serve on the CPC. It's been very enjoyable. I've been elected as the clerk of the committee, been on the Community Housing Subcommittee and the Springbys Road Land Planning Committee. And I've really found it to be very, very productive work, and I think we've really achieved quite a bit. We just have our new applications for this year's program that have just come in. We'll be reviewing those this Thursday. I'd like to continue that process with the Committee and at your, at your will. I'd appreciate it.
Open it up to questions from the Board? Go ahead.
Just a question during the past, this past town meeting, there was questions about defunding the CPC, if you will, or I think more appropriately, stepping away from the Community Preservation Act. What are your thoughts about that or about meeting people halfway, so to speak, and reducing the amount of money that's put into the CPA?
Well, there's a couple of issues. One is that we've already made significant commitments for open space. This whole idea of the land bank being transferred into the CPA funding source as a way that we were able to, as a town, continue our, our acquisition of properties and, and make a better community as a result. The opportunity right now with the new state legislation that's just passed in the Senate and the House is that we can actually see some more money coming from the state. So, in fact, we're leveraging state money with our CPA funds as well that we wouldn't have if we started to take it away or move it into new areas. So we have a commitment in place. We have an opportunity for more state funding as a result of having the CPA. We could, we could talk about how the percentages play out, but I think we have to understand, my personal feeling is we have to have an educational program as well. What is the CPA doing for the community? And we've been talking about that as, as a committee, as to how we might go out with more outreach to the, to the town and explain some of the issues involved and where the funding is coming from, where it will go, and what our success stories are. You know, one of the things I was thinking about is, and I think you could probably think about it the same way, what has been the most successful CPA project from your perspective? Maybe what was, maybe even what was the least successful? And start to think about having, to have that in mind. And I think a lot of people maybe, maybe don't have that right off the top of their head because they don't have that knowledge about what the CPA has really done for the community overall. And I'd like to get, have a greater outreach for that purpose.
I'll follow up a little bit, and I think that's probably where some of the public outcry came from. It's not this Board's job, but it's your job, us as leaders to task you with educating the public. When folks come forward at town meeting and start looking at their tax bill and see what the money is and say, what are we getting for bang for the buck? I understand. This Board understands. But the people out there who write those tax bills and write those checks don't understand. I think we need to task you as one of our representatives there to make sure that they understand that the quality of their life will increase based on the votes that you make. Not everybody gets the opportunity to see those quality changes. You know, the young family gets to see the Sandwich Road Fields where you made some donations to. The people in the Historic Commission get to see the preservation that you might have. We need to wrap that up as a package. And just by acting and spending money and by acting as our conduit to help move forward the right projects is not all that's necessary. I'm wondering how you think you can help bring that education to the folks out there. I know there's some additional, I'm going to ask that as a first question. I have one other question I want to ask you, too.
There, there are several ways. We've been talking about it as a, as a committee. We have a, we'll have a report this, this Thursday at the CPC meeting. And what we're, we're talking about doing is, is having outreach articles so that we explain the different components of the CPA and how the town has been applying it and what it means to the community, as well as doing a survey. We want to know, what we have to know, is how people perceive the CPC and the CPA. So what we want to do is go out for a survey that starts to ask the questions. What do you know about the CPA? Are you, are you familiar with what it can accomplish and what it's been doing for the community? And in so doing, we'll be able to know what else we can do to respond back with other information to the, to the public.
My follow-up question is, it's my understanding there's new legislation that loosens up recreational facilities?
Correct.
Can you see, can you explain to us how you envision that helping and benefiting the town?
One of the things that, that we see more commonly than, than we're able to, to fund is how we support recreation in the community. And this is so important to the, not only as a tourist community, but also just as a family community as well, too, and the kind of facilities that we have available to, for people within, within the town and those who visit us. By being able to support recreational facilities, we'll be able to expand, hopefully, the recreation that we have available within, within the community. When there's so, when the, the, the impact on our existing recreational facilities is so heavy that we need something more to support the, the family life and the, and the visitors that come to our, our community. I think that if we, if we do this correctly, it should be to leverage additional recreation, to expand it, not necessarily to just repair existing recreational facilities, but to expand on what we have as a, as a community for recreation.
Okay. Thanks, Doug.
A follow-up to that. Do you think there's a chance that recreational facilities can include improving of the Ellen Mitchell Beach House?
I'd, I'd take that under advisement.
Okay.
Now, one of the things that, that was important about the, the beach house, and we just, and one of the recent actions was to, to, to restore some of the beach sand that's there. Not necessarily the, the most scientifically accurate way of preserving the building, but here's, here's one of the facilities that's a premier location. It's one of the most important beach facilities that we have. It's, it's so visible to so many people that come visit the town. Certainly improving, it makes a lot of sense, one way or another, whether it's CPA funds that do it or something else. I, I agree that it would behoove us to fix it up.
Any other questions? What's the Board's pleasure?
I move that we reappoint Mr. Buckland to a three-year term on the CPC.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the Board? Any public comment? Yes, Mr. Finn.
You were speaking of educating the public on what the CPA and the CPC actually are. I suggest that any of the taxpayers out there would go and Google or Bing or whatever your favorite search engine is, United Nations Agenda Twenty-One, and read that, and that'll give you a little background on what the CPC, where its roots are. And it, it's, it's not all wonderful, and I think it's an extreme waste of public funds. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Both? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next up, Recreation Committee. We have two, last week we heard from an applicant. This, this week, we have the two incumbents. Mr. Watson first, please. Just give us a couple of points of why you want to be reappointed.
My name's David Watson. I was on the Rec Committee for the last year and a half. I was appointed to a position that was left vacant, I think after about halfway through a term. Gym teacher at the East Falmouth School. I work with a lot of the kids that are involved with youth programs. I have a six-year-old and a three-year-old that are now starting to enter those programs. I have a work history. When I first was in college and undergraduate and so forth, I worked the Rec Department. I also worked full-time three years after that. So I have a background in it. One of my goals is to make sure that the kids that I see and the families that I see have an opportunity to access these programs. And it gives me a voice on the Rec Committee to kind of, you know, be that, that go-between for both groups.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Yes.
Just one. You understand that the Rec Committee is an advisory committee?
Yep.
Because we've had that discussion with some committee members who get upset when the Board of Selectment doesn't follow the recommendations of, of an advisory committee. But obviously, as an advisory committee, you folks, we ask you for your input. We ask you for your opinions, and we don't always take them, unfortunately.
That's fine.
Okay.
And I might add, that's because sometimes we know our financial limitations or some limitations within government.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the Board? Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you.
Is Brian Coyne here this evening?
Yep.
Hi, Brian.
My name's Brian Coyne. I've been serving on the Rec Committee for six years. I'm up for my third term, which will be my term limit term. I got involved on the Rec Committee when I found that my kids, coaching my kids was taking too much time as far as you'd lose time with other kids, your other children. You'd be with one all the time. And I found this to be a, a way to give back that fit better into the schedule and go to all the kids' games. One of the bigger projects we did was the Sandwich Road Fields. And it sounds like in the future, hopefully, we'll be working on a project to get the high school football program up to the high school. And I hope to be part of that.
I, I don't know whether the school grounds really necessarily comes into the Recreation Department, but we'll leave that for another day. They do have recreational facilities, but they're, they're under the guidance
Oh, yeah.
of the ideal of the School Department.
No.
Any questions here with the Board?
Yes. The question I asked before, I understand it's an advisory committee. I'm sure you're probably more aware of that, Mr. Coyne, having been on there for six years now.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yes, Doug. Quick question, just about, I guess you're also representative to the Golf Advisory Committee?
Yes, I am.
And that's representing the recreational?
I get, I'm the, the elected or appointed member from the Rec Committee that sits on the Golf Advisory Committee. Actually, I've really enjoyed that, too. I should have mentioned that sooner. We've, they've added, it's a great asset to the community, especially on the recreation side for the kids. They run great programs out there for the kids. If anyone doesn't know it, if you're a resident of the town of Falmouth and you want to go out and play a round of golf on the nine-hole course, you can take your children for free.
And that's children sixteen under, eighteen, do you know the policy?
I don't know if the policy stops it. It's definitely eighteen if they're in high school. But most of the kids go to college, so you're in charge of them until they're twenty-three.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board? Yes, I'm going to entertain and see where, the way they like to go, and then I'll let you make some comment. Do I have, we have two folks here, and we have one other applicant. We have the Chairman of the Recreation Committee with the Board. Go ahead. Would you like to speak?
Sandra Cuny, Chairman of the Recreation Committee of Falmouth. I was here last week when Richard Roberts, Richard Rogers also was interviewed for a position. Having known him growing up with my children, I'm very impressed with the fact that the next generation who has children, who's coaching, who's involved in recreation, wants to give back. I would at this time, though, having served with Brian and Dave Watson, I would like to see them be reappointed. I think they both bring a great asset to the Board. I've actually talked with Richard. I'd like to see him come to some of our meetings in the future, and I'd hopefully would like you to consider him in the future. I think he would be a great asset, too. But at this time, I, I would put my support behind the two that I've been working with. So thank you very much.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Brian Coyne and David Watson to the Recreation Department.
Well, in this case, I think we need a motion first to put all names in an nomination, and then we would do a vote, if that's all right. and then we would do a vote, if that's all right.
I didn't have the benefit of the first interview, so should I vote on this? You know, I didn't see Mr. Rogers, so...
Did you see his application?
No.
Okay, then, so if, that would be up to you when they wanted to...
It's up to you.
Yeah, that would be up to you. Yes, yes, Brian.
Unless we want to take it under advisement for a week, so that...
It's all right. It's fine. I'm very impressed with these two applicants. It's fine. I had Mr. Watson's father for basketball years ago. I won't tell him what year, though.
Let me just get back to the, we put all names in nomination.
I'll move all names, we put all names in nomination.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
So we'll take a vote on that first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. The ayes have it. Now, we'll do a roll call vote.
Two out of three.
Two out of the three.
David Watson and Brian Coyne?
Watson and Coyne.
You know, I appreciate Mr. Coyne's efforts and participation. I think once in a while, it's not a bad idea to change things up a little bit. So I'm going to go with Rogers and Watson.
Pat?
Watson and Coyne.
And I'll go with Watson and Coyne as well.
I would also like to reiterate Ms. Cuny's recommendation or invitation to Mr. Rogers to come to the Recreation Department meetings, and certainly, we'd be thrilled to have him apply again in the future.
Great. So they're both, Mr. Watson and Mr. Coyne are both reappointed for a term expired 6/30/15. Thank you. The next is, are you here to, I think you're on an interview schedule tonight?
Signing Board of Appeals.
I think that's next week. You're not on the list, I'm sorry.
But that's quite all right. You're only impressed with everyone that has been on.
Next up is the zoning, I just tried to figure that out. I was looking down the list, I'm sorry. Next up is Zoning Board of Appeals. We have two alternates that are applying for a full-time voting position that has been vacated by Dennis Murphy, who is not seeking an additional term. So this evening, we have the benefit of interviewing David Hadad, and Patricia Johnson will be interviewed on 6/25. Mr. Hadad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board, David Hadad. Currently, an associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I'm seeking that voting member position. Unfortunately, we're losing Dennis, who is outstanding board member. Hopefully, if you put me in there, you could fill his shoes. I've gained knowledge of the Zoning Board of Appeals since I've been on there. Really enjoyed it, working with the other board members. I have had a perfect attendance. I have two or three days a week. Fortunately and unfortunately, up at the ZBA office, going poring through the files, I'll go to one or two site visits for the applicant, trying to do my due diligence for the town and the applicant. You know, at the meetings, I'm open-minded. I don't come in with any, you know, forethought or thinking of, you know, outside factors or whatever, just open-minded, critical thinking, and hopefully, you put me on. Maybe, obviously, you've taken under advisement, so you can, you have the other applicant speak, and maybe you can speak to the zoning administrator and the chairman. Maybe they could tell you what kind of board member I am in the interim.
Okay. Do you have any questions from the board?
Just tell me how long you've been an alternate member now? You say a year?
No, it's been since January.
Since January. So you're certainly very enthusiastic about your position on the CPA.
I enjoy it, yeah.
You enjoy it a lot? Okay. That's good.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes, Brian?
Your thoughts about how well the board works together and what changes you might suggest?
Our board works excellent together. Besides, we had that joint meeting to pour over the bylaws. I think that'd be helpful. I heard you mention that earlier today. But the thing I really enjoy about the board is the applicant feels very comfortable, you know, approaching us like it's a, you know, friendly, because it's intimidating getting up there, especially if you don't have representation, you know, putting your application out there. But I think that's the, you know, we're like a can-do, friendly, trying to make Falmouth, you know, more friendly, not that it isn't, but just so the applicant feels good getting up there. I think we do a good job with that.
I have one question. Very often, on the Zoning Board of Appeals, you're the last bit of relief, and sometimes you can make a property that is worthless worth something. But also, you can provide relief where someone may have owned a piece of property for many, many years, and just by merely the fact of not developing it, had lost some rights. Can you elaborate what your thoughts on those type of issues are?
What, when they?
What are your thoughts? Do you think that property owners deserve some rights, in other words, moving forward? Being in pre-existing conditions and things of that nature?
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah, I think the property owners have rights, but also, you know, take into account the butters and, you know, history, you know, the area, that sort of thing. You know, times change, you know, so we don't like to be a cog in the, you know, stop the works, but try to do the right thing by the town. Put the town first. I think that's what our board does all the time.
Okay. All right. Any other questions to the board? Take, yes, Doug?
I guess one question is, if you were not appointed as a voting member, would you still be willing to be an associate member?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Move to take it under advisement.
Motion in a second. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Ayes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. At the meeting on the 25th, we'll be interviewing two folks from the Conservation Commission, as well as Pat Johnson, and that would be the conclusion of our appointments for this board under the authority. And I might add that it was past Chairman Flynn that sent this in motion last year. It was easy to take over, and Diane did an excellent job of making sure everybody was in line.
And got appointed before July 1st.
And got appointed before July 1st, because we're not there yet. We still have one meeting left to go. So in that regard. The next item is approval of minutes of meeting on June the 4th. We'll take that one first, and then approval of executive session minutes after that. So there's two separate motions we look for.
I move approval of the minutes of June 4th.
Second.
2012. It's a motion and a second. Any further discussion of the regular minutes of June the 4th? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Ayes have it. You're going to abstention.
Mr. Chairman, the next one, I wasn't here for June 4th, could we do April 30th separate? Because I was here for June 4th.
Sure thing. Yep. And Mr. Suso, these are executive session minutes. Is your suggestion is to approve and release, or to approve and hold?
I recommend that both dates not be released.
Okay. So the first set of minutes that we would take under advisement, I mean, for action tonight, would be the minutes of June the 4th, executive session, and to not release.
Some move.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. The ayes have it.
Abstain.
Abstention. Would you like to make, the next set of minutes were the minutes of April the 30th. We had a problem with a quorum last week of voting in these minutes?
Yes, that's right, because I wasn't abstaining.
Right. David?
Oh, yes, I'll make a motion to approve.
And not release.
And not release executive session minutes from April 30th, 2012.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Abstained. Two abstentions. All right. The next item here, we'll move to summary of actions. I know some people have been anxiously, impatiently waiting out there for summary of actions, and I appreciate you taking the time. First up, we'll go right down the list. Approve or request for one-day liquor license, Knockabout Music Festival, Bunsfield County Fairgrounds. Just want to make a disclosure, for blanket disclosure, for all of these, I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. So under number one, approve request for Knockabout Music Festival at the fairgrounds on 8/11/12. Approve request for a special one-day liquor license, The Rotary Club, Pops Constant Fireworks at Bunsfield County Fairgrounds on 8/18/2012. The next one would be approve request for a special event, Autumn Escape Bike Track on 9/28/12. The next one is approve request for road closure, Parsons Way, One Way, Wacoit Congregational Church Bazaar on 7/13 and 7/14. The next item is approve request, I'm going to hold this one. Number six is approve request for a special one-day liquor license. I'd like to hold that one as well. Number seven, request for a special one-day liquor license, Cape Cod Conservatory. Number eight, approve request for a wedding permit, Susan Tato, Bristol Beach. Pardon me, that's the one I would like to hold, not the one on 8/25. I'm sorry.
8/20.
So we're not holding number five?
Oh, we're not.
We're not going to hold number five. So do I have a motion for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 7?
Some move.
I'm not going to go through the other ones.
What about 9, 10, 11, and 12?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't go to the second page of the agenda. Thank you. But approve request for a special event, Falmouth Arts Market, Marina Park. I'd like to hold that. Number 10, approve request for a special event, Lofta Yoga, Marina Park. Number 11, approve request for a special event, Falmouth Firefighters Local, 1397, fundraiser on 6/20/12 at Old Silver Beach. So I'm going to ask a question of one of the applicants out here. If we move this in the blanket, and I'm looking at the folks from the Pops, would you like to speak on this, even if we move it on the blanket, or would you?
We would, we would, we would be happy to.
No, I'm asking.
You want to?
All right. Would you?
Would you like us to speak?
No, no, if it's not necessary, that's... Okay, so we'll look for a motion on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 10, and 11.
Some move.
Some move. Second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Hope you enjoyed your evening.
Educational.
You folks are very patient.
The item number six, approve request for a special one-day liquor license for Susan Stivaleta.
Stivaleta.
I need to say to the board that this license is a for-profit license, and it is not by a nonprofit, and it's for a full alcohol liquor license. And the state ABC law states that only a beer and wine license can be issued for a one-day liquor license unless, in fact, it is for a nonprofit or an organization that, a charitable organization.
I guess my question is, are they, were they notified, or are they going to be notified, that there could be a problem with this? Because isn't it a pig roast and...
They were called.
They were called today.
This same group applied last year and had a problem on another way, and they thought this way would provide them an opportunity.
Oh, okay.
So we'll work with the applicant to find another way it means if we can do that. So...
So we just take no action?
Take no action, I would think, unless the board wanted to make a favorable motion. The next item is approval of a request for a wedding permit, Susan...
Teoto.
Teoto. This wedding permit is against the Board of Selectmen's policy. It's after the beaches are open, and it's between 9:00 and 11:30 a.m. So I just asked that the administrator, Diane, to contact the applicant, ask to see if they could come up with some other alternatives.
You don't have much time.
Yeah, I guess not. Unless someone wanted to make a positive motion. The next item that I held was item number nine, approve request for a special event, Falmouth Art Market. My personal viewpoint on this is, last year, this was held at Peg Newton Park. It is now moved to the Marina Park. I would like to get some more information from this group. I think it is more folks coming to town to sell their wares, and it becomes a commercialization, specifically the number of dates that they ask for. It is just a way for folks to, you know, make a living, I guess, in some form or fashion. But last year, there was a public outcry when it was in Peg Newton Park, because we had a lot of folks on Main Street who pay rent, contribute to the town in the form of taxes, employ folks, and they thought it was unfair.
It's so art.
And, well, not only art, but they said this, these products were not art. So I would like to see if we could investigate the applicant a little bit more and not move on this this evening, but that's up to the board's pleasure. But that's my two cents worth in regard to it.
So I would...
So we just hold it?
Hold and take no action.
Take, hold and take no action.
They mentioned rent payment in there. Now, is there...
They pay $75, I believe, for the town for the use of the park for every...
Marina Park?
Marina Park. Thank you.
I noticed they said that they went there last year, but they didn't have much foot traffic.
Right.
Well, there isn't a lot of foot traffic on Scranton Avenue.
Right.
So, but maybe a conversation, you'd think.
Maybe we can engage the applicant and find out a little bit more for the applicant. Let's go to the Town Manager's Report, and then we'll go to individual...
Oh, what about the proclamation?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
For the Eagle Scout, Andrew McCann, they also, I'd say, would like to know who might put on board, might be there.
We have one Eagle Scout here in this group, and he gets the honors to read the Eagle Scout ones. Cut you off guard, didn't I?
No, I knew this was coming.
Oh, you did? All right.
All right, this is a proclamation. Whereas Andrew J. McCann of Boy Scout Troop 40 has successfully completed qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, and teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting. And whereas Andrew J. McCann met these challenges with aplomb and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and his community. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for a special court of honor to award its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank. And whereas Andrew J. McCann is now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privilege, now therefore, we, Kevin Murphy, Brent Putnam, Mary Pat Flynn, David Bragg, and Doug Jones, a selectman of the town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim, Thursday, June 14, 2012, is Andrew J. McCann Day. That is my motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. The ayes have it. That's this Thursday evening.
Yeah, so who?
If somebody...
Who's available?
I should be available to go.
Oh, you should be there? Oh, good. Spoken like a true scout, Eagle Scout.
True Eagle Scout.
Eagle Scout, right.
The rest of us could never obtain that. You know how many cookies he probably had to sell back then?
That's Girl Scouts.
I know you fraternize with the Girl Scouts.
I like the cookies, but that's a different, different thing entirely.
Okay. Before we go to individual selectmen's reports, we'll go to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder to the board that Saturday is, of course, the Board's Strategic Planning Retreat from 8:30 to 1:00 at Highfield Hall. We look forward to working with the board on that occasion. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. And then we'll go to individual selectmen's reports. Does anybody have anything to report today? Wanted to remind the board that we have a retreat this, this coming Saturday, the 16th, and I hope to those of you who can make it, can. And I look forward to a wonderful and productive day.
I have two items to report.
Okay.
First, Mary Pat and I did attend the wind turbine option planning group. We did move back away from the table and acted as liaisons and answered questions and are able to bring back information to the board. And I remain optimistic that the procedure is going to be able to move forward, and I think some real progress has been happening. Also, on this Sunday, I attended the Falmouth Housing Trust Strategic Retreat for their, setting up their three-year strategic plan, and was very impressed with the amount of work and diligence being put in by that group to really do what they can to increase the number of units in affordable housing. I appreciate the invitation by the Executive Director, Annie Seganek, and it was a wonderful morning that I spent with them on Sunday.
I just had one other thing to say. I attended the school building, high school building committee meeting as the board's liaison last Thursday. And it is important to note that the State School Building Committee has audited the building project, and I had asked and requested of the school building committee to forward that audited report to the Board of Selectmen, so you should be receiving it shortly. And hopefully, if there are any questions as we move forward, we'll be able to take those up after that. Anything else?
I attended the Cape Cod Healthcare's Cancer Survivor Educational Program on the green, the library green on Saturday. Dr. Hope Wood put it together along with Leslie Marcy from the Falmouth Public Library. It was really a joint effort between the two. And they had some really, I didn't stay for the entire three hours, but the time I was there, they had excellent speakers. And kudos to both Cape Cod Healthcare and our own library for supporting that effort. That was really good. And then the Old Stone Dock invited us to their little fundraiser for the Ellen Mitchell Bath House. It was 10:30 to 4:30, and I went there at 2:15, and there was nobody there. So they must have all gone in the morning or around noon time and eaten, because by 2:30, it was, like I said, there was nobody there, so...
Just for the board's information, I've asked the administrative office to prepare, I know a lot of us, David brought up tonight, some policies that all of us maybe forget about, and they're making a packet together of all the policies to be distributed to the entire board so that we all have a set of those ourselves, as well as the fact that I'm preparing a calendar for the next 12 months so that people can look out a little bit. But we'll keep a calendar in the office, in the selectmen's actual office, three months out, that can continue to be updated. And I've asked, as we get invitations in, which we so often do, that we write those dates and the times of those invitations on that calendar, so if the board could poke their head into that office and take a look at it, just to keep you abreast of what's coming down the pike.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the calendar.
Yep.
This is a year away, but I know of a Monday night I cannot be at a meeting. Is it helpful to let the office know that when people aren't going to be here, and we can adjust the schedule to accommodate that?
Sometimes we can adjust the schedule. Sometimes some of us all deserve to take a vacation every now and then. That's completely logical and feasible, but if you have a date, please let the office know. They write it in the main calendar when you won't be available, and then we try to work around that, especially if we have important votes.
The second thing, there are two meetings coming up that the Wind Turbine Analysis Group is meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 at the Gus Canty Recreation Building. And then I know Wednesday night, there's a meeting about the Pay As You Throw. I think that's back at the library at 7:00 also, just so people know about those two important meetings.
Great.
I just wanted to make a comment about noting on the calendar in the future when you're not going to be there. The other reason it's really important is that if we have a, there are some hearings that require four votes, so if you plan ahead and you notice that someone's not going to be there, they probably not schedule it that night, because the chances of even getting a unanimous from four isn't always possible. So it is good to put down as far in advance as possible if you're not going to be there.
Actually, something very briefly, I received a phone call today. Now, I always try to go to the Day of Portugal.
Right.
And I couldn't go this year because of the week I had, as you might know, but I guess nobody was there to read the proclamation, and I'm trying to heal things, sort of. So I just want the board to be aware of that. I guess I try to go to as many things as I can, and I wasn't able to. But I was wondering if we should look at, if we do get invites, like we look as we're running up to a town meeting where we have precinct meetings and assign someone, maybe we should just bring up the fact that, hey, we've been invited to so-and-so, I'll go. So at least we have some representation there. I just want...
Maybe that'd be a good idea if we put that calendar up, if anyone who could go to that event can initial a calendar. Then we would know.
You know what happened? We got a letter about a week or so ago, maybe it's longer than a week ago, from the Portuguese-American Association about that, and I read it, but I just saw the letter, and I immediately thought noon on Sunday, because it's been noon on Sunday for years and years. So I kept my Sunday free and then realized that it was Saturday at 4:00 p.m., and I had already made a commitment. So I did send them an email letting them know that I couldn't make it because of a prior commitment, but I don't know why they changed it. Do you know why they changed it from Sunday to Saturday?
Well, no. You and I last year...
We were there last year.
On Saturday. We came back from that trip. We went to the MMA thing.
Oh, it was Saturday, wasn't it?
Yeah, no, it's Saturday.
Oh, it wasn't 4:00 last year? That's right.
But I just, you know, I feel awful. I just couldn't, I couldn't go. Generally, I try to go to the, it's a pretty good, pretty good time. Now that I'm a member there, it's, so I'm talking to them anyway. I just want the board to know in case you hear anything.
I love that.
And, you know, unfortunately, my schedule in the summertime is not as cooperative, but maybe Doug's is probably more cooperative in the summer.
Just not on graduation day.
Not on graduation, that's fine. That's okay. Yes, Nancy?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Jones, I believe that Mr. Jones just said that Pay As You Throw is at the library. I believe that Pay As You Throw is at Morris Pond School.
Yes, it is Morris Pond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So if there's no other business this evening, I take a motion adjourned?
Some motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Please have it.
Cavosa Excavating is a family-owned and operated company specializing in the installation of Title V septic systems. Cavosa Excavating is one of the largest septic system installers on Cape Cod. Whether it's upgrading your current system or installing a whole new system, Cavosa Excavating can do the job. Cavosa Excavating, 508-563-5530.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.